Welcome, everyone. Today is the swearing-in ceremony for the City Council, our council meeting for January 7th, 2025. I want to welcome you all to the historic Bob Hope Theater. We're going to begin today with an invocation by Bishop Dockery.
Somebody needs to cue him.
The bishop.
Somebody needs to cue him.
The bishop.
Bishop. Bishop.
He's a stage manager.
It's hard to hear.
Oh, really?
I hear.
You're dead.
All that can, would you do me a favor and stand to your feet, all that wood?
Stand up.
And we're going to pray for this year, Happy New Year to all of you. And we're going to pray and ask God's blessings upon our city and our officials. In Jesus' name, Father, right now, in Jesus' name, we thank you for another year. Thank you, God, that you have blessed us to be here on tonight. A new year, a new time, a new season, new opportunities, new inspirations, new aspirations. Father, we ask now, God, that you would bless all of our officials. Oh, God, bless, oh, God, our city, bless our community. Father, this year, we pray that crime would go down. Father, we pray, oh, God, that graduations would go up. Father, we pray this year that taxes would go down. And housing opportunities would go up. Father, we pray tonight, God, that you would blanket our city. Let your grace and your favor rest upon us. Father, we pray for economic opportunity to hit San Joaquin County. Father, we pray, God, for our officials. We pray for Mayor Fugazi, oh, God, and her entire team. Vice Mayor Jason Lee. In the name of Jesus, God, we pray for Brandon "Philip" Padua. Father, we pray for Mary Ella Ponce, Mario Enriquez. Father, we pray for our chief of police and his entire team. Father, let safety, oh, God, come to our city in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Father, we even pray for our city manager on today. Give them all the willpower, the understanding, the knowledge, oh, God, the forbearance, oh, God, the unity for this city, for this people, for our family. In the name of the Lord Jesus, and, Father, we bless you tonight. Thank you, God, for what you're going to do. Thank you, God, for a new season. Thank you for a new year. Thank you, God, for a brand-new opportunity. Thank you, God, for a new city. Thank you, God, for a new Stockton. And, Father, I pray, oh, God, that this community would rise up to meet every challenge that faces us in the name of the Lord. Father, I pray tonight, oh, God, that you would just continue to bless us and do with our city all that we have empowered to do, all that we have dreamed to do, all, God, that you have put in our hearts to do. Let the city of Stockton be a beacon in our county, in our state. Father, bless us, and we shall be blessed. It is in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ that we pray. Amen and amen.
Thank you, Bishop Dockery. Well, now do the pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Padilla, would you please lead us in the pledge? Would Maria Ella Ponce, please join me?
By the authority confirmed to me as your city clerk and the elections official for the city of Stockton in the state of California, I present to you your certificate of election and declare that on November 5th, 2024, at the general municipal election, you, Maria Ella Ponce, were elected to serve as District 2 councilmember for the city of Stockton.
So now I get the honor to officially swear her in. Do you, Maria Ella Ponce, solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic? That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? That you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion? And that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
I do.
Congratulations.
I can take this one. Good evening, everyone. Please excuse my voice. I'm just recovering from being under the weather, so please bear with me. First, I want to take a moment to give honor to God, my Lord and my Savior, as all things are possible through Him. I stand before you tonight with immense gratitude and a deep sense of responsibility. Being elected as your councilwoman for Stockton City Council, District 2, is one of the greatest honors of my life, and I am truly humbled by your trust and support. I want to take a moment to thank my family. To my father, Francisco Ponce, and my mother, Marbella Ponce, and my siblings, Letizia, Elizelda, Jose Luis, and Julio, thank you for your unwavering support. You have been my rock, my strength, and my inspiration. Your advice and encouragement mean the world to me. I love you, mi familia. To my son, Yar Dani, you are my world. Thank you for being mommy's number-one supporter, from cheering me on all the way to the finish line. You are my sunshine. Every obstacle I have encountered, you have pushed me through. I love you, mi chiquito. It's your bright future that drives me to fight for a better Stockton where all children can thrive. To Richie, thank you for your amazing support and unconditional love. To one of my dearest friends, Jasmine Hernandez, thank you for your incredible friendship. Thank you for being my cheerleader and for being my confident through every step of this journey. I also want to extend my heartfelt thanks to Mayor Christina Fugazi, to soon-to-be Vice Mayor Jason Lee, and Councilwoman Michelle Padilla for their guidance and encouragement. Your leadership inspires me, and I am honored to walk this path alongside you. To Coach Derek Graves, Mr. Robert Beatles, Motecasuma Sanchez, the Steinberg family, the Bautista Toledo family, your endorsement and belief in me mean the world to me, more than words can express. Thank you for your unwavering support. To my campaign team and the countless volunteers who knocked on doors, made phone calls, ensured our vision, this victory belongs to all of us. Your dedication reminds me why this work matters so much. Thank you. To the residents of District 2, you chose hope, representation, and progress. You chose someone who always put the needs of our community above special interests. I ran this campaign to give our neighborhoods a voice in City Hall, to bring people together and to build Stockton, and to build a Stockton we can all be part of. This journey has not been without its challenges. Throughout the campaign, we faced intense criticism from the media and endured harassment that no one should have to experience, but we never wavered because this campaign wasn't about me. It was about you. It was about creating a government that listens, understands, and fights for its people. As I step into this role, I want to make one thing clear. I'm here to work for the people of Stockton. My focus will always remain on improving public safety, supporting our schools, addressing homelessness, and creating economic opportunities for everyone in our city. These are the priorities that matter most to you, and these are the priorities that will guide every decision I make. To those who may have not voted for me, I promise to listen to you, to represent you, and to work tirelessly to earn your trust. Our district is diverse, dynamic, and resilient. Together, we will overcome challenges, celebrate victories, and build a stronger community. Thank you from the bottom of my heart to everyone who took the time to vote for me, for believing in me, and for standing with me, for giving me the opportunity to serve. I am ready. Let's get to work and make Stockton a city where everyone can thrive. Thank you.
Mario Enriquez, please join me. By the authority confirmed to me as your city clerk and the elections official for the city of Stockton in the state of California, I present to you... I present...there we go. Let me start over. By the authority confirmed to me as your city clerk and the elections official for the city of Stockton in the state of California, I present to you your certificate of election and declare that on November 5th, 2024, at the general municipal election, you, Mario Enriquez, were elected to serve as District 4 councilmember for the city of Stockton. Congratulations.
All right, good evening, everyone. All right, are you ready? Councilman? Do you, Mario Enriquez, solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic? That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? That you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion? And that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
I do.
I present to you Councilman Mario Enriquez.
All right, Stockton, how are we feeling? That's right. We promise fresh, new, and exciting energy, and I'm so proud and honored that I have been elected by the people of Stockton to be your next Stockton City Councilmember for District 4. I want to particularly thank Assemblywoman Radija Ransom, who just did the oath of office for me. Long story short, we talk about investment in our community and the leadership opportunities that we want the next generation, our young kids, our kids, our grandkids, to have. That is what we're investing in right now, and that's what we are committed to. Radija and I actually met 15 years ago. We participated in a leadership program. So 15 years ago, we said, what can we do for the Central Valley to give back? And now, as an Assemblywoman, as a councilmember, we're showing that we have always done the work every single year. My mom, who was just onstage, came here to this country with my sister in one arm and a bag full of dreams in the other, and she always told me to do two things in my life: to get an education and give back to the community. And I remember, at age 13, 24 years ago, I was president of the Lathir Youth Advisory Commission, and I asked my mom every single day since then, 24 years ago, I asked her, Mom, what more can I do? How can I better my city? What can I do for Stockton, the future generations that are waiting for our leadership now in this moment to create better outcomes? And I still ask my mom that every morning, every single day. So I've done the work, but it's beyond just me. The people of District 4 wanted to go a different direction. They wanted young, active leadership, young blood that says, this is a product of our community, who has taken the steps to travel the world, work in Capitol Hill in DC, work in different organizations, and come back home and work at his alma mater, at the University of the Pacific. To understand the issues, we need public servants that have faced on these issues head-on, not just faced them, but have lived it. To be a freshman at UOP in my dorm and to be sleeping on the floor of my dorm and having my mom sleep in my twin bed, saying, Mom, we're gonna be okay. We might be unhoused, but we're gonna make it work. The people of Stockton have always been there for my mother and my sister. So I have always been indebted for 15 years since I left UOP to say, I want to come back and better my community. There was this joke about being a boomerang, and it's a bad thing, you know, it's always this bad notion of, oh, get out of Stockton and don't come back. But we want to stay here. This city has potential. This is an amazing city to raise a family, and the promise of future generations that we owe our community. That is what we are committed to. So know that you have a fighter in me. I will fight every single day for Stockton. Pick a Stockton, you never gave up on me, and it sure as hell ain't gonna stop right now. So District 4, get ready. Stockton, get ready. I want to thank the countless volunteers who have been part of our campaign. We were the underdog, and for all those that saw me door-knocking in my bright orange shoes, I clocked it. I did 2.8 million steps, 20,000 houses, and the people that organized were grassroots. We had five $10 donations, and people thought it was impossible. Where have you been? I said, you know where I've been? I've been out investing and bettering myself because you all deserve leaders that have the skill sets and the training and the lived experiences because that's what we deserve. That's who Stockton is. It shouldn't just be a resilient city. It should be a city of promise and action, and that's what this City Council represents. And I'm so honored to work with my council colleagues because we are gonna get stuff done. We're gonna be held accountable. I'm not perfect, but you know that I will always show up and I will always speak up for our community. So I want to thank all the volunteers, my mom, my sister, so many of my close family friends, the Bachmas family, my childhood friends who are here that were with me in the Youth Commission 24 years ago. You all have invested in me, so thank you all so much.
Jason Lee, would you please join me?
Y'all gonna have to lower that mic for him now.
Well, hold on, I gotta do my part first. By the authority confirmed to me as your city clerk and the elections official for the city of Stockton in the state of California, I present to you your certificate of election and declare that on November 5th, 2024, at the general municipal election, you, Jason Lee, were elected to serve as District 6 councilmember for the city of Stockton.
Do you, Jason Lee, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic? That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? That you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion? And that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
I do. I do. Thank you.
We now call you the councilmember.
Thank you. The seven-year-old got it right. I didn't even put my hand up, but I do take the oath. Thank you very much. In 2018, I wrote a book titled, "God Must Have Forgotten About Me," and it was a memoir sharing my coming-of-age story. In the first chapter, titled "Surviving Stockton," I described a life that many in this community may have experienced or are experiencing right now. You see, my life wasn't the picture-perfect story where mom and dad waited for me to come home after school to help me with homework, cook me a nice meal, or read me a bedtime story. My childhood was rough in the streets of Stockton, and growing up in them was hard. But I titled the first chapter "Surviving Stockton" because I realized that my life is a testimony, that if you can survive the streets of Stockton, you can survive anything. You can go ahead and clap it up if you hear something that you agree with. Navigating through Stockton's Children's Home and Mary Graham Hall, I found my way into foster care. The journey led me to discovering my faith, and the Easter family that's here today at New Hope Church of God in Christ taught me many things, including how to read the Bible. And in fact, Isaiah 41:10 from the Old Testament says, "So do not fear, for I am with you. Do not be dismayed, for I am your God, and I will strengthen you and help you, and I will uphold with my righteous right hand." I never forgot that verse, and in that moment, I realized that God had not forgotten about me. In fact, He would use me throughout my life to fight for those less fortunate. And as a child navigating foster care, being shot at the age of 15, losing lots of friends and families to gun violence in this community, including losing the most important person in my life at the time, my brother Rodney Dion Townsend. But I came to a pivotal moment in my life. I had to use what was meant to break me to fuel my every step. My life has been defined by overcoming. Every weapon designed against me has failed, and every single hater has been a stepstone of my success. My ambition, my tenacity, willingness to do whatever it takes to get the job done is hopefully modeling for those like Malcolm, who choose to follow in my footsteps, because young people are watching us, and they have seen us let this city go to hell. The days of hammer skate, golf land, water slides, parks and pools, Boys and Girls Club have all disappeared. And the rich, the rich keep getting richer, and the rest just keep on struggling. And just to be very clear, I'm extremely committed to changing that. Now, to fulfill this commitment, my focus will be creating opportunities for our youth by investing in after-school programs, rebuilding safe recreational spaces like parks and pools, and expanding access to mentor initiatives like the Iron Ready Program. Additionally, I will work to ensure that families have access to affordable housing and that our city's small businesses receive the support that they need to thrive, creating a stronger local economy for everybody. First, I want to thank my seven-year-old campaign manager. Malcolm Bell. So I first met Malcolm when he was just five years old, speaking before the City Council on my behalf, asking the city to invest in kids like him. And the youth of Stockton have been the least invested in resource of this community for far too long. And it was important to me that the face of my campaign reflect the priority that we need to give our youth. Malcolm, I just want to say thank you for stepping up and taking on this task. You are officially the youngest campaign manager in U.S. history to win a campaign. He's right there, okay. I'd like to thank my amazing family and friends, who laid the groundwork for one of the most exciting and invigorating campaigns that this city has ever seen. My cousins Natasha Brown, Anitra West Williams, Anthony Dunn, my sister Tamika Small, and my friends Ali Abdullah, Teddy Rain, Fredo, and Tashante McCoy. We worked every single day for 14 months. Your leadership and your support made all of this possible. To my incredible volunteers who worked tirelessly, who asked for more to do instead of complaining about the workload, you've become my family, and we've built a diverse campaign that reflected the richness of our community, from the Filipino and Asian-American Zumba ladies to Brother Nuri Muhammad and his organizers, Georgia Brownlee and R.C. Thompson, the Satnam Singh and the Sikh and Punjabi leaders, as well as Zoila Moreno, and the Latino community who have embraced me as one of their own. Thank you for helping us build cultural bridges to unite and strengthen a fragmented district. And to my staff, Marina Peric, Johnny Cruz, and Andrew Willens, thank you for helping me to balance the wildest deliverables to get every priority that we had this year met. And to our youth volunteers, especially Zach Holesy, thank you for showing young people that civic engagement can be meaningful and fun. Now, as I said when we began this campaign, this is just the start, and we have lots of work ahead, so every single person that's ever helped me, you are stuck with me now at least for four more years. Yeah, I hope you clap now because the work is coming. Now, the dedication and unity that we've seen throughout this campaign gives me hope for what we can achieve together. Now, with your continued support, I plan to prioritize equitable policies that uplift underserved communities in District 6 and across Stockton. This includes addressing the gun violence by increasing preventative measures, strengthening partnerships with local organizations to provide resources for mental health and family service, and creating pathways for economic mobility through workforce training programs. These policies will not just be promises, but actions to rebuild trust in this community and create lasting change when I'm gone. To Miralek Christina Fugazi, thank God for Christina Fugazi, y'all. Because, baby, had it gone the other way, y'all would've had to bring a seatbelt to City Council. To Miralek Christina Fugazi, your support from the beginning in educating me about the Stockton politics, policies, and the needs of this community have been invaluable. Thank you for believing in my vision and for guiding me along the way. To Councilwoman Padilla... To Councilwoman Padilla, your endorsement as a sitting city council member while I was running this campaign, your support of the work my nonprofit has done for young people, and your resilience in the face of political attacks inspire me. Thank you for taking my five calls a day and believing in me, and I'm here now, and I got your back. Now, I'd like to thank the donors, because we raise and spend a lot of money, because they were raising a lot of money to fight us, and we beat them with this money. So I'd like to thank the donors who supported our movement. As you all know, Merilek Christina Fugazi and Councilmember Mario Enriquez and I, we all ran on a slate campaign titled The Safer Stockton Coalition, the first of its kind. And it was based on shared values and the vision that we had for you and that we heard from you, the voters. And I want to thank the members of the media who shared my foster care to Forbes story, the journey from running the streets to running for city council. But unfortunately, in Stockton politics, when you run for office or hold a position, the players in this community often try to put you in a box. You're either labeled a 209 Times puppet or a Stocktonia special interest prop. And while I'm proud to own one of the culture's most successful media platforms and to be a part of the global media community, I am beholden to neither one of these platforms. However, I do want to thank Moctezuma Sanchez and the 209 Times for sharing my advocacy to bring translation services to City Hall, a right denied to the Latino community for decades. And for highlighting my work with the Housing Authority to desegregate the pool in Sierra Vista, making it accessible to all children who live there. For helping the Gospel Rescue Mission to get county funding from Supervisor Paul Cannepa when the city voted against keeping beds open to keep homeless off the street. Thank you. Yeah, clap it up for Paul Cannepa. He out there somewhere. Thank you for sharing the work that I was doing before I was even in office. Though some tried to reduce my efforts to being an agent, for others working in the shadows, the voters of Stockton saw through the smoke and mirrors. Thank you to the voters, and as Christina Fugazi says, enough was enough and forgetting behind our campaign. Now, a special thanks to Floyd Mayweather, Rihanna, Joyner Lucas, Kevin Hart, LeAndrea Johnson, Congresswoman Jasmine Crockett, Ben Crump, Babyface, Tiffany Haddish, Benny Medina, Prophet Walker, Catherine Bruton, Mayor Antonio Viegas, Stephen Clubeck, Stockton firefighters 456, operating engineers 3, SEIU Local 10 to 1, SEIU Local 1,000, and of course, Cardi B, who was sick and wanted to be here tonight, but she couldn't make it. She'll get here one day. Your contributions and your willingness and your presence here in Stockton show how much you care about me and my community. And lastly, and most importantly, to the voters, my promise to you is to lead with a clear vision, integrity, transparency, access, and accountability. Thank you for trusting me. While I know I won't make every single person happy, I will work tirelessly to deliver on the promises made during my campaign. Now, a friend of mine gave me some good advice. He said, "Politics is like math. Focus on the addition and multiplication, not the subtraction and division." And as your... Thank you. As your representative, I pledge to make voices of our community heard. My first priorities will include advocating for transparent governance, ensuring public resources are equitably distributed, and addressing critical issues like housing affordability, public safety, and youth empowerment. And I will work to rebuild the trust in local government by pushing for accountability and keeping the community informed every step of the way. Now, when I ran, I was clear. I'm gonna come to Stockton, and I'm gonna be spilling the tea here, too. As a councilman, of course. But the tea here, unlike my day job, stands for truth, trust, and transparency. And so that said, I'm ready to get to work. I'm humbled to serve. And thank you to everybody, every single person that came out tonight. Thank you.
Christina Fugazi, would you please join me? By the authority confirmed to me as your city clerk and the election's official for the city of Stockton, the state of California, I present to you your certificate of election and declare that on November 5th, 2024, at the general municipal election, you, Christina Fugazi, were elected to serve as the 81st mayor of the city of Stockton. Congratulations.
Before we get started, I'd like to say one thing. I'm happy that the city of Stockton voted for Christina Fugazi as mayor. The thing is that we raised a child that has exceeded our expectations, both her mother and I, and we're so proud of her. Can't get any better than this. Do you, Christina Fugazi, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic? That you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California? That you will take this obligation freely without any mental reservations or purpose of evasion? And that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter?
I do.
Amen.
I do not like people seeing me cry. Man, my dad got me on that one. I was not ready for that. Starting off, I think it's very important to give my thank yous. The first group I want to thank is the people of Stockton. There was a columnist, a columnist that said that I was the populist vote, that I catered to the ordinary and disadvantaged members of Stockton. Guess what? Yeah, those are the people who count. But it wasn't just because he said that. The fact is that money should not win elections. It should be based on your integrity, your vision, and your authenticity. And the people saw that, I think, throughout my campaign and the rest of our campaigns. The next group is my family. Family members, I got all kinds out here. I see people waving. I want to thank my family for supporting me and being patient with me. Campaigning is not easy. I also want to thank a particular family, and that is the family of Kathleen Capusin. Kathleen's family adopted me and made me one of their own. And while Kathleen and I had our moments, she had the heart of gold, and she cared so much about this city, and I hope that I'm making her proud like I am my parents. I want to thank those who believed in the vision of this campaign and were willing to walk with me, talk with me. And there's a special group, too. They're South Stockton warriors who told people they needed to vote for me. They know who they are. I also want to thank all those that endorsed me, there are a number of unions, specifically like FIRE and the Building Trades. Thank you, thank you. There's a whole list of them, but I couldn't have done it without you. Businesses, restaurants, residents, who would host meet and greets for me, who would open up their business and allow me to meet people where they are. And then I have my coworkers. There are people here from STAG, as well as... And there are people here from E House, I think, so... Ooh, E House! There we go! Also, the many people who shared my campaign on their platform, social media sites, pages, groups, and individuals. And then the last group would be the elected officials, many of them who are here today. Because guess what? The city of Stockton cannot do it on their own, and we need to work with our school boards, our county supervisors, our state, and our federal representatives, because many hands make for light work. This is a great city, and it is a city full of promise. For those that are new to Stockton or those who maybe have been here for a few decades, you really need to understand the history of this city. Eight thousand years ago, when the Yokets people came here and saw the magnificent San Joaquin Sacramento Delta, we had this unique ecosystem with clean water. Eight thousand years ago, we're working on it now. Abundant fish, plentiful game, plants for food, natural resources, and water channels for travel. Then, in the mid to late 1800s, as our nation expanded, Stockton attracted people from everywhere on the globe. We had people from China to the Philippines, Mexico to the Southern United States, and all over Europe, including Italy, where my family came from. As a science teacher, I know how important diversity is in sustaining a strong ecosystem. If we were all alike, it would just take one of us to get sick, and then we would be extinct. We need to have diversity. It's important for us and essential in the creation of a strong community. So we should all celebrate the uniqueness of our city. In Stockton, we speak more than 70 languages, of course, English, Spanish, Tagalog, Vietnamese, Kamai, Mong, and some of us a little Italian. We are also home to more than 150 churches, synagogues, mosques, Sikh temples, which we have the first in North America, right here in Stockton, Buddhist meditation centers, as well as people who are atheists and agnostics, which is fine, because here in Stockton, we cherish our constitutional right to freedom of worship and thought. Stockton was home to Benjamin Holt, not just the street, but the guy who invented the caterpillar heavy machinery. Chris Isaac, a STAG graduate, who won a Grammy for his song Wicked Games, where Larry Itliang and Cesar Chavez planned a movement. And Dallas Braden grew up playing baseball and graduating from STAG High School, and then went on to pitch a perfect game, only the 19th in Major League Baseball history on Mother's Day in honor of his mother. But these are only a few of the phenomenal things that come out of Stockton, but more is yet to come. Our amazing and diverse city and its innovative people are a place that we should all be proud of. People don't want any more of the status quo. People want accountability, transparency, and to be heard. People want change, and that's why you've got these four people up here. Councilmember Ponce, Councilmember Enriquez, Councilmember, almost Vice Mayor Lee, and myself. I should have just done this on paper. That's my favorite medium. We live in a city with many issues, complicated issues, and getting the right results is important. A top priority is getting people on the same page. We work more effectively when we work together. In order to work together, we need to have trust. We need to trust one another and hold each other accountable. We must be results-driven and process-oriented. We must do a better job of communicating, too, what we're doing and how people can be involved, and we must be committed again to that change. Sadly, one in every 78 people in Stockton has been victimized by violent crime. Homelessness has doubled in our city, and electricity rates have outpaced inflation by 23%. I don't know about you, but my last electricity bill, I almost fainted. So these facts, we need to change them, and it's going to take vision, courage, and focus. And believe me, this new council and I have those three things. So in the first 100 days of this administration, we are ready to introduce and implement such plans as Light Up Stockton. And those lights are going to start in South Stockton and work their way up north. Local government has three key responsibilities. The first one, the most important one, is to keep people safe in all segments of our community and to stop those that are victimizing the community. Stocktonians are tired of public safety laws not doing enough to protect our residents and businesses from crime. My vision for public safety is not to defund the police, because we need more police officers. And in the words of NWA, "It's not F the police," because safe cities, safe cities have strong relationships between the police and the community. We need to reimagine public safety. Some things will be easier than others, some will be more difficult. One of the things that we're looking at is mental health units in our police department. There's a new program that Chief McFadden is working on. It's called Your Way Registry. And this allows family members who have, those that have mental health illnesses or special needs in their homes, that we know about it before we even show up at that door. And guess what? We can make that happen. We need to tackle gang involvement through enhanced intervention and another program that Chief McFadden is proposing is called Parenting with Purpose. Now, you saw my dad up here, and he said some great things about you, but I want to tell you, my parents held me accountable. If I did anything wrong, if I stepped out of line even a little bit, they let me know. And guess what? You think I did that again? Nope, I sure didn't, because it wasn't being grounded, it was something else. Yeah, luckily for me, they raised a respectful, responsible, and productive kid. It should be the same with our kids, and adults for that matter. If we continue to let people get away with doing whatever they want, they're just going to push it to the limit. And guess what? We have to change that. Speaking of our kids, we obviously need more things for them to do. Money is a great motivator, and we need to bring summer youth employment program back where 100% of that money goes to our kids. And if kids want to before that, they can do internships and then go right into that job for the summer. The other part of this is that we need free and low-cost supervised activities and programs for our kids. I think we should have free swimming. I think we should have free swim lessons. I think that we should have free use of our fields, our parks, our lights for youth sports. Now, you might be asking yourself, how are we going to pay for this, though? We don't want to go back into bankruptcy. Well, guess what? The city took in more than $15 million of your tax dollars with... of your tax dollars with Measure M specifically for libraries and recreation programs. They projected about $8 to $10 million, but we got more than that. So guess what? We can make those ideas happen. Over the past decade, Stockton has encountered a number of challenges in addition to increases in crime. Fentanyl, heroin, and other drugs led to amplified numbers of people suffering from that substance. Along with that, it has affected our public safety and quality of life. Now, with the help of the county and state and federal, we have the resources in place and soon residential programs for rehabilitation and mental health needs. But here's the deal. If you're not going to take the help we're offering you and you're breaking the law, you go to jail. It's about the accountability. We know that drug-addicted psychosis causes mental health issues that lead many to homelessness. We have plans in place to get the homeless help, shelter, job training, transitional housing, and even jobs, such as the CARES team, I know Nancy Lam's somewhere out there, from Stockton 209 CARES that actually employs homeless people from the streets who now have a purpose, have hope, have pride for their city, and are earning a paycheck for cleaning up this city. And guess what? We need more of that. Additionally, I want to extend a friendly but sturdy hand to big business and development, the development community. I believe in Stockton, where some businesses are expanding, we need affordable and quality housing. It is an important part of our city's future prosperity. But as you may already know, I don't believe in sweetheart deals for developers. And I do believe that everyone who benefits from projects aimed at bringing our city prosperity must pay their fair share of the infrastructure necessary to make these projects thrive. So yes, no more sweetheart deals, no more shortcuts, no more you get to advance to the front of the line. Okay? We're still open for business. We want you to bring your business here, but you have to pay your way. Here in Stockton, we need, we need your expertise and your capital. But from now on, there are new rules for doing business. Rules that are rooted in the best interest of the people of Stockton. That's how you become part of the new Stockton, by putting people first. And guess what? We can do it. This council is working for you. Stockton will no longer be the punchline in jokes. We will no longer make the worst list in any category. And we will realize that if something isn't working, we have to have the courage to try something different. We can only accomplish this if we are willing to put our differences aside along with our egos and work together. And guess what? We can do it. Lastly, in the words of my grandmother, my dad's mom, "If you don't have anything nice to say, don't say anything at all." I am tired of all the negativity that is talked about Stockton outside of this city and inside of this city. That needs to change. You are either part of the solution or you're part of the problem. Which do you want to be a part of? I challenge everyone in here to work together on solving the issues in our community. You need to show up. You need to stand up. And you need to speak up. Because this is the new council of the people, by the people, for the people. Hey, I'm ready. Are you? So join us in making Stockton the example for getting it right. It's time to roll up our sleeves and prepare for transforming this city. And if you haven't figured it out yet, it's not about me, it's about we. Because guess what? Sí se puede, we can do it. Okay, it's time to get the meeting started. Everybody have a seat. Let's do the roll call.
Councilmember Blauer.
Present.
Councilmember Enriquez.
Present. Present.
Councilmember Lee.
Present.
Councilmember Ponce.
Present.
Councilmember Padilla.
Present.
Councilmember Bia Padua.
Present.
And Mayor Christina Fugazi.
Present.
But I forgot something! I need to call the meeting to order. So, at this time, we have the opportunity for the public to make comments. Now, there is a long section in here that talks about all the rules. I know you guys already know it. Tonight is a celebration. So please come forward if you would like to make a comment to this council. And there'll be microphones out here. Come on up and make a comment. First comment. State your name for the record.
Hello. It's kind of short here, but... Hello, my name is Motek Sanchez. And I would like to say, on behalf of everybody who believes that Stockton has potential that it can live up to, everybody who did not move away from here but has chosen to remain and work to better our community, everybody who believes that we can turn the corner and have a brighter future, and on behalf of those who are tired of the old ways, the old politics, and the people and the parasites who were leeching off of this community, chose to believe in a new form of leadership. On behalf of everybody who voted for you and everybody who believes in you, on behalf of 209 Times and all of our staff, I want to wish you congratulations.
Thank you.
And I also want to remind people that an endorsement of 209 Times does not mean that you get to do what you want to do. We're still keeping an eye on you. As Brando, he knows. With that being said, I also want to acknowledge this historic moment because not only is this an opportunity for our community to move towards a new future, but to my understanding, this is the first time in Stockton's 177-year history since Charles Weber betrayed Mexico and helped the United States take this land from Mexico. This is the first time in our history that Mexicans, who are the majority of this community, have a majority representation on the city council. I would also like to give a shout out and thank Michelle for weathering the storm. You sustained a lot of unnecessary flak. And thank you for your leadership and continuing to stay strong for this community. Again, thank you and congratulations.
How y'all doing tonight? My name is Akbar Bib. I'm the Vice President of SEIU 1021. I want to thank you from Labor for your support and the work that you're about to do. And the prayers and everything is with you on service to this community. Please stay in the fight, even when it gets tough and hard. We want you all to stay in the fight and know that we standing with you and Labor's standing with you. All right, take care.
I just want to say I'm so glad today's almost over. I have been waiting for this day, and I am just so excited that we could now... How many? One, two, three, four. Okay, we are going to get the city moving. I'm not going to take those two minutes that we were given, but I'm going to say I am so glad today has come to this moment. I love you guys.
Mary Elizabeth, fourth-generation Stocktonian scientist and one who provides research and information to each and one of you. And I hope and I pray that if you have ears to hear, you will hear. And one, please endorse and appoint to the Eastern San Joaquin Sub Basin Groundwater Authority those members that you had presented for the northeastern, because there is none. And for many, many years now, I have been saying so. Two, the fireworks were out of control. I submitted a documentation of air quality impacts throughout our community. We were harmed. We have high incidence of asthma.
Okay, everyone. I know some of you are leaving. If you are going to leave, leave quietly. But let's show respect to our speaker so that they have an opportunity to share their thoughts with council.
Four, we have added more liquor stores and smoke shops and tobacco retailers in the same areas for generations. And we need to reduce that and improve the health. And I give thanks for the good work that I know that you all will do. Amen.
Julie Dunning, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, new council members and returning council members. We, the people, are so excited, so hopeful, and we are so ready. Thank you, thank you all.
Good evening, Mayor Fugazi and new city council members and old city council members. I love hearing those words of "affordable housing." And I take on the challenge to continue to help all of you succeed in addressing affordable housing. Enjoy the moment and congratulations to all of you.
Oh my goodness, Mayor Fugazi. The time has come. Congratulations, Stockton City Council, for this wonderful new face and new feel. I feel the energy here tonight. Visionary Home Builders is an affordable housing developer. We are pulling up Fugazi, so we are ready to work with you in the city of Stockton to bring affordable housing units. Thank you and congratulations once again, council.
Well, 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 well. First and always, giving it all to God. Thank God I'm still alive. My name is Cynthia Gail Boyd, native of Stockton, California, a true humanitarian and civil activist. I have attended City Council longer than anybody sitting here. I've appeared at City Council since December 2nd, 2018. And I'm going to be here. Congratulations to each of you. Ms. Fugazi, I'm ready to make a new start, if you are. Ah, some of that. We certainly have some work to do. Ah, if we wanted to be someplace special. I'd like to give each of you an assignment right off the top. When we meet again over there, I'd like for you to think about how you're going to help solve the issue with all of the unlicensed... I know they're the majority, but all of the unlicensed vendors on the street. Public safety ought to be number one. The second thing I'd like for you to work on is all of these loud-tailed, noisy-tailed parties on the weekends, out of control. And when you call, the city is on condition blue. And if you don't know what that is, that'll be your assignment, okay? So let's work together so that we can have a better community. I've always worked with my city council person who's doing a great job, Valanapuda. I'd like for the rest of you to join us in the fight in the district that I was born and raised in. I'm vested in life in this city. And for the new ones that don't know me, know that I mean when I say, ah, that that nonsense and cheap talk it'll run a marathon when the BS shows up. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Maria with Visionary Home Builders, Project Manager for Affordable Housing. And what I want to tell you tonight is to please, I urge you, to put affordable housing at the top of your priorities so that our families don't have to choose between food or rent. Thank you very much.
Machos Kattash, Oyashay, Destiny Rivas, Genge E, Stocktonum. Welcome. Thank you all for being here. My name is Destiny Rivas, and I am from Stockton. I am a representative of Native American community here in Stockton, specifically the urban natives that are well represented in here. We have 1% of your guys' population, but that doesn't mean that we don't matter. With that 1%, you have one of the largest populations in the nation of urban natives. So please, don't forget about us. Don't just call us out when it's a photo op. Please, put us on your boards. Make sure that we have our voice, because we need it. Our kids are suffering. When you guys are talking about some of the suffering that's happening here in Stockton, a lot of it is coming from our community. We are disproportionately in some of the worst areas, and we need some help. And I know that we can do it together. I know these faces up here, and I'm so proud that we have so much diversity and so much strength up here. And I can't wait to see what you do. Congratulations.
Stephen Bohorkis, SNJ Associates. Congratulations on your election, each and every one of you. You are a breath of fresh air. I know I speak for a lot of people when I say that. Thank you for winning your election. Our services are available to you. I too represent the Native American community. If you need anything, any type of information whatsoever, I am available to you. Thank you, and again, congratulations. God bless.
Vahigujika akal sah, vahigujiki pate. And good evening, Mayor Fugazi, Vice Mayor Lee, and the entire council. My name is Tej Paul Sein Benoah. I'm a historian and the Secretary of Health at the Stockton Gurdwara, the Stockton Sikh Temple. And again, today's a celebratory night, so I'm going to save all the longness that I have for the entire council, which we've already discussed before and throughout the entire campaign. And again, like people have said, it's a breath of fresh air, but the work is just now beginning. And we're with you guys and look forward to building more bridges for more safer and prosperous Stockton. Thank you, have a good night.
Wow, what a night. My name is Paul Akinjo. I'm the mayor of the city of Latrop. So on behalf of the city of Latrop, I want to say congratulations. I can call all of you friends. I think one way or the other, our path has crossed. Mr. City Manager, Valanapuda, Ms. Padilla, and our new Ms. Ponce.
Thank you.
Our new, dynamic Mayor Fugazi. And if I can, this is an opportunity to call you friends now, Mr. Lee, with no fear. Thank you for all you do. Mayor, coming from Latrop, that is one of the reasons I'm here tonight, that you are representing not only Stockton, that you took your beginning from the city which I'm now the mayor. I'm very grateful. Mr. Blauer, thank you so much for being there. And the city clerk and everyone that is here tonight, thank you so much. Let's work together. We are neighbors, we are close by, be ready to work with you. And please, don't forget to share those good ideas with your neighbors. Thank you so much, congratulations.
Good evening, Mayor Fugazi, Vice Mayor Lee. I'm so excited to see what you guys can do for the city of Stockton. It was such an honor running alongside of you guys in the election. Coming from a young Stocktonian, I can't wait to see what you guys can do for Stockton's youth. Listening to you guys speak tonight literally gave me chills. There's amazing opportunities on the horizon for Stockton's youth, and I know you guys will be the ones to do the change. Si se puede.
Good evening. Congratulations. My name is Mercedes Heredia, CEO of Angels Recovery Dive Team, and of course, wife of the Stockton hero Juan Heredia. I am so glad, and we almost jumped off our seat when you said that you would like to implement free swimming lessons back in our city. We are looking forward to working with the city to prevent future drownings, as that is our vision and mission of our nonprofit. So congratulations to all of you, and we look forward to working with you guys. Thank you.
Good evening. Congratulations, Mayor Fugazi. What's up, Mr. Blauer? My name's Matias Heredia. I'm a real estate broker here in Stockton, and I'm also Juan Heredia's son. I'm really excited to see what the new city administration is gonna do to not only facilitate, but also enforce housing for the homeless population here in the city. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you for having me today. I just wanna say thank you to Mayor Fugazi, City Councilman Jason Lee, Mario Enriquez, and our Ponce. I'm Stocktonian Vice District four. I was a candidate, and I just wanna say thank you so much, Christina, for helping me with the words of encouragement that you gave me. But I want to have you guys understand that the safety that we have in Stockton is very crucial. We can't even go to the mall because kids are going to the mall, and they're, you know, making it unsafe for children. And when you guys say that you're gonna put, that you're gonna implement the safety in Stockton, I really, really hope that you're gonna start, that will be the first thing that you're gonna start attacking is our safety, because it's important. But again, thank you for having me today. Congratulations to all four of you, and best wishes.
Good evening. My name is Carol Jones, and I'm the executive director of a nonprofit called Mending of Mothers. And we support... Is this better?
Excuse me. It's really hard for us to hear speakers because of side conversations, so please just bear with us. We really wanna make sure that we hear from the people.
Is this better? Can you hear? Okay. Hi, my name is Carol Jones, and I'm the executive director of Mending of Mothers. We are a nonprofit, and our mission is we support unhoused mothers. Unfortunately, the majority of these mothers are single mothers. So when we support them, we support their children and their unhoused. And we have several programs that we have developed, and they work. We help them get back on their feet. We encourage, we uplift, we do job readiness. We do whatever it takes to uplift those mothers, to get them back on their feet. I really wanted to come up here just to see your face close up, 'cause back there was sort of hard to see. And I wanted you to see me, because you're gonna see me again. And again, please remember the name, Mending of Mothers. We have a website, mendingofmothers.org. And I'm excited to come do some work here in Stockton with your unhoused mothers and their children. And so, but thank you and congratulations, councilwomen, councilmen, and mayor. So nice to see you guys up close. Thank you again.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ropender Mangat. And all I have to say is change is the law of nature, and today, this evening, it has been proved. Secondly, I met Mario Enriquez. Actually, I didn't meet him. I was up there. I heard him, his vocals, along with Jason and Christina Fugazi a few months, a month ago when Mayweather was here, respected Mayweather. So I was like, yes, this team is going to make it happen. And again, looks like the proper preparation has been done by this team to present the great results. And we are all in a great shape. These are not the only captains. We also are the captains. It starts from you guys as well. Contribution and commitment from you, parents, kids, youngsters. That's how they can prevail. And Satnam Singh, thank you so much. It was because of you I was able to meet Jason Lee and this great team. I mean, all I can say is onwards and upwards. I mean, I've never been shaking like this in front of a mic, because I always carry confidence in one and microphone in another. But God bless you all. Stockton is going to be great. These people are going to keep their words, what they have said. Yes!
Okay, my name is Pandora Crowder. I know quite a few of you. I'm District Five. And I am so excited to get to say Mayor Fugazi now. We have done a lot of work together over the years, and I look forward to so much more. I am the president of the Conway Homes Residing Council in South Stockton, District Five, with Brando Villapouda as our city council member. And I, like you, Jason, I look forward to trying to bridge our gaps. That's always been my goal. I work very hard, not in just Conway Homes, but I have got my fingers throughout the city. I never turn a child away. I never turn a family away. And I so look forward to working with all of you as usual. And just so you know, my new pet project is Manthi Road this time. We got speed bumps in Conway for our safety. It's time to navigate Manthi Road and to fix all of those horribly constructed thoughts that were put into people's mind when the road was there and the communities that were put around it. Just a huge thank you to everybody for helping us always make our event such a big, proud event. That's very intimidating. For all of our kids and our families, and I look forward to doing more as the years go on. And I am so proud of you, Mario. I've known you such a long time and worked with you on so many different levels, so I'm excited to see what we get to do. Thank you, guys.
All right, good evening. My name is Jorge Armando Astamerano Berumen Parra. All right, I am, I was born in Mexico, like some of y'all, but came here in 1969 with my family, and so we're here. But I am the commander for Veterans of 4/4, Luneta Post 52. And I'm here to call everybody today that don't forget that the Stockton Civic Memorial Auditorium is gonna turn 100 years old this year, 2025. And I look forward to everyone here today to get out there and make Memorial Day and the Patriots Day and Veterans Day a big one that we can go and celebrate with 100 years. And hopefully, we can have a meeting and discuss big plans. Right now, it's January. It's around the corner. And so those days are gonna come up real fast. Congratulations. I look forward to see what you guys can do. It's very inspiring what Mario said, Enrique says, seeing all you young guys, especially from growing out there. I got my own stories, like everyone else. It's not good, probably made a paper. But I look forward to what you guys are gonna do to Stockton, and I'd like to see the rebirth of downtown Stockton. And for all you one of you, I hope y'all come and make it to 9/11, Veterans Day and Memorial Day. Thank you, and y'all have a good rest of your evening.
Hello, I am RC Thompson, the executive director of Renvan South Stockton Coalition. And on behalf of the coalition, we want to congratulate you, Madam Mayor. We want to congratulate you to our, just, he's come home to help us and support us. That's brought so much inspiration. Your grit, your vigor, the way you ran your campaign, and how you mobilized show that you were a true Stocktonian. And I want to tell you, Vice Mayor, thank you from the bottom of our heart at RSSC for connecting before you gained power. You understood that. I want to thank you also, Councilmember Enriquez, for getting on the ground, connecting with the people. This is important. We are resident-centered. That means we lift up the voices of our residents in the South Stockton Promison area. I want to thank you, Mr. Villapouda, for your support and connectedness. And we further look forward to working with you. Congratulations again.
My name is Vincent Cantino. I've been in Stockton all my life. I've known Christina's dad for at least 30 years, at least 30 years. And I'm not here to congratulate anybody. I want to see what you guys can do. Two years from now, then I'll tell you whether I'm gonna congratulate you or not. Serious business. I'm, I have a plumbing business, and I've traveled throughout this whole city. And this city is a dump. It's getting as bad as San Francisco's Tenderloin District. You got this $15 million. You got unemployed people that need work. You should actually have a crew that goes out and picks up the trash throughout this whole city. The whole city, 'cause let me tell you, as a plumber, I gotta stick my hands in toilets. And yet, I feel more sick watching, walking, driving along the street than I sticking my hand in the toilet. At least in a toilet, I know what I got. Out there, it's a mess. You need to have a specific crew that goes out every morning with a truck, or you guys know how to equip it, and pick this crap up. The second thing I got, and Christina knows, when I come, I have issues. I'm an issue-oriented guy. Is, right now, we have too many absentee landlords. Too many of them. We're all owned by foreigners, and I mean, people not living or in Stockton. And here, what do you guys do? You send them a form, send me $200, and certify your own building. What kind of crap is that? You expecting somebody in San Francisco, of course he's gonna send you the $200. He's gonna say excellent, and yet the buildings inside, you go, you go inside the buildings, they have no refrigerators, they have no stoves. The toilets don't even flush. And yet, they certified that the building was in expert, in expert condition, excellent condition. Before you take another $200 of my money, I want your butts to inspect my buildings. I may not know what's wrong with it. I guarantee you one thing, if there is something wrong with it, I will fix it. And I would like to know it. But I don't want to send money to the city when they're not doing anything. Inspect these properties that people live in. It is not, it should not be a revenue stream for the city. Actually hire somebody to stick their nose in the guy's toilet. Actually hire to make sure that the lights actually work, that the outlets inside the houses actually work. Do your job, and then I'll be glad to send you the $200. Thank you.
You got my picture? Mayor Christine and my brother Jason. I have a personal relationship with these two individuals right here, because she came to my church, and he came to my church. The first time I met Jason, I didn't really know Jason. And I had bad feelings, 'cause I was listening to the community of people that didn't really know who you were. And you said, "Where you from?" I said, "Compton." You said, "Wait, let me tell you about the city," and you gave me the whole history. And you did too at my church. When you came to my church, I told you what I do. My name is Nate Williams. I run Choice for Freedom. I'm the first juvenile out in the state of California from Compton. That was tried as an adult. I spent 32 years in prison. This lady right here was a correctional officer lieutenant warden that I now take back inside the prison, 'cause I created systemic changes. And I wanna cry, Jason, 'cause I didn't know you didn't have a father either. My father didn't want me either. So I'm the product, just like you. Somebody didn't stand for me, that I had to join a gang and figure out in Compton what a man was, and go to San Quentin and come out and realize the cause factor of what I did, is all the things I did to myself, I caused it. But God had something for me, just like you, just like her. God had, and this lady, stand up, this lady invited me to her church. My pastor gave an open prayer for y'all, right? That's my pastor. He changed my life. He helped me change my life. But I'm not gonna take up too much of time. I wanna come to y'all office tomorrow, or whenever y'all invite me, to talk some business about violence prevention and the work I specialize in. Thank you. Congratulations.
Christina Fugazi. I don't need to introduce myself to you. You know who I am. But I do need to introduce you guys that this lady right here, Christina Fugazi, believed in me, Ivan, aka B-Boy IMAX, professional breakdancer from Stockton, California. She believed in me since day one. And I now have my own first Stockton-ever breakdancing studio ever, ever. There has never been a breakdancing studio here in town. So if you guys are a firm believer in the arts, and you know, music, art, dance, disco right here, this is the girl. I'm telling you. We're gonna get our youth going. We're gonna get them moving and grooving. I'm also lead with three of my other partners of an event that we created three years ago called MadFest, Music, Art and Dance Festival. And we are gonna firmly, like, bring that back and make our youth, you know, active again. We're gonna get them off these tablets and cell phones. And instead of liking the videos, we're gonna have them be doing the videos themselves, because Stockton has some talented youth, y'all. And that's what we need to be investing in, because breakdancing, it saved my life. I mean, I've seen it all. But I'm still here. I'm still moving and grooving. I've done commercials. I've traveled the world competing. But I always come back home. Why? Because I know, I just know, it's just something in the mud. Mudville has something in our youth. They're very talented. I'm telling you right now. Look up Break Step Studio. We're gonna be moving full speed and just be prepared, 'cause these kids are talented, and we need to give them an outlet, so. Christina Fugazi, hey, this is her right here. This is what we needed. Give her a round of applause, y'all, because she was frontrunner when I said I wanted to do a Music, Art and Dance Festival. She said, "Okay, let's do this. I'm gonna help you out the best I can." I'm not mayor, but I'm on the board, so look at her now. You ready? Let's do it. All right, y'all. Hey, get ready. I'm a firm believer in all the arts. I do it all. So this is for her, Fugazi. I just whipped this up today. Here, this is for you. Guys, thank you for your time, and let's invest in the youth. It is what it is. Later, y'all.
I'm Gina Baladad Fortes. Call myself Mommy G Fortes. Magandang gabi, Stockton. Know what that means? Good evening, Stockton. That is a Tagalog. I'm representing Filipino community myself. And I congratulate every one of you. I just want to say, whatever the difference of you guys, unite as one in God. So everything from this in front of us, the people of Stockton. I lived here for almost five years, two decades. Two decades, and I witnessed in front of our neighbor's house, a man died. My neighbor was shot at their house. And we are near, and I have two kids. They were small before. But now... But now, whatever your plan, here is Stockton. Show it. And with your heart, your big heart, that I always say in my live streaming video FB, maganda tayong lahat. And what I say is, maganda tayong lahat? We are all beautiful. And the most beautiful should be our heart. And what comes in our mouth is what is inside our heart. So may the Lord bless us all. May the Lord bless Stockton. God bless us all. Thank you.
Hi, councilmen and women. I'm Crystal Coles, and I'm from SEI Local 1000. And I just want to say that I feel this palpable energy from this room tonight. It's been a beautiful ceremony. Thank you all for your speeches. I'm actually not from Stockton. I'm here from Sacramento. But I came here tonight to see history happen in Stockton. We believe in you guys. Labor believes in you guys. Local 1000 believes in you guys. We see you guys. I want to personally congratulate each and every one of you. We were so proud to endorse some of you. Now go out and show out in this community.
Thank you.
I wrote something I'm not good at, but I did write something. Good evening, councilmembers and fellow community members. I stand before you today as someone who once left this city, never intending to return. But life has a way of bringing us back to where we are needed most. Over time, I have been watching Jason Lee's work online and was deeply moved by his passion and drive to create meaningful change and invest in our youth. I am proud to represent the urban Native American Indian community and to serve as a volunteer for Councilman Jason Lee. Together, we can amplify voices... We can amplify voices that have long been unheard and to build a brighter future for all. When I first started volunteering, I remember everyone with our volunteer group asking us what our why was. And prior to then, I had never thought about what my why was. My why is deeply personal. It's for the family members I have lost and for the future of my children. I want them to grow up in a community where opportunities flourish, where hope replaces despair, and where unity drives progress. As you continue the important work, I want to encourage you, you all, do not let negative people or actions distract you from your purpose. Change always comes with challenges, but your focus and commitment will make the difference. I am filled with hope as I look at this council and the fire you bring to making a difference. I eagerly anticipate the positive changes ahead. And I want you to know you have my full support. Thank you for your leadership and your dedication. May God bless you all in this important work. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Renee Jones. And I am here actually just as a mom, a parent. I was raised in the city of Stockton for forty-plus years. We lived here. And about five years ago, I moved away to Modesto. But three of my children live here. And both Jason Lee and Ms. Fagazi, and that's how I know you guys, but now Mayor Fagazi, have impacted my children in a really beautiful way. Jason, I was foster parent. I adopted two children from foster care and raised them here in Stockton. My daughter, Marissa Robinson, she's twenty-six years old. She has special needs. But she has done everything, the hard work, with our family's support to be able to live on her own here in Stockton. She really wanted to vote this year. For the first time in her life, she was able to vote because you and your staff. She went down to your office. She got on the bus by herself. She was texting me back and forth where she was at, what she was doing. And just like you said, she got to your office and your staff took her over and helped my daughter vote for the first time at twenty-six years old. I want to thank you for that. And I came here tonight from Modesto to make sure that I could support this moment in time. I feel like it's history right before my eyes. And Mayor Fagazi, you were my son's teacher at Ventura Academy. I think you might remember. I know you as Ms. Fagazi. Our family has stood beside, behind you every step of the way. I remember all those trips. My son's name is Zachary Robinson, by the way. And he would go on those trips and all of the leadership things. You poured into him. And he's thirty, he'll be thirty this year. And he's an incredible young man, but you greatly impacted his life. And he knew that I was coming here tonight, and he sent you a message. He said, "Please, if you are able to talk to Ms. Fagazi, tell her I said congratulations. We have been rooting for her." Congratulations to all of you. We are so excited today.
Hello? Hello, my name is Tambora Hill. My wife was like, "Are you gonna go up there and speak?" That means we're gonna go up there and speak. So I was like, you know, otherwise it's gonna be a long ride back home. But I just want to say congratulations to you all because anybody that works this hard to serve this city, and we know what kind of work we have cut out for you. We're behind you. And I made a pledge to myself tonight because I make these posts on Facebook. And I'm born and raised in Stockton, in the mud. I know everybody. I used to watch your brother Eric Duncan destroy the basketball team at Stag. You know, I'm from here my whole life. But I make these posts and I call Stockton Gotham City. I'm headed to Gotham City. Pray for me and stuff like that. And it's negative. And you talked about it earlier. And I pledged to not say anything like that. I pledged to be supportive. And I pledged to stand behind you, all of you. Because all of you have worked. Everybody is not gonna agree with everybody. Everybody is not always gonna be on the same page. Everybody is not gonna have the same vision. But collectively, all of you, you have our vote. Everybody sitting at this table have our vote. And we believe in you. And I hope, I truly hope, that what we see in you, you make it happen. Thank you.
Hello, first giving honor to God. I thank God for the opportunity to stand before you on this day. And I congratulate our Mayor Christina Fagazi, our Vice Mayor Jason Lee, and all of our newly-elected city council. But I also want to thank those who are remaining, our councilmember Villa Poodwa Padilla, and also Blauer for your continued efforts to make sure that we are safe in our cities and have what it takes to move forward. I know we have a lot of difference of opinions, but it's hard to put forth an effort to serve. It is. And so, but I also want to say in that vein, I thank our city manager, Mr. Black, for all of your work that you have done to lead over three hundred thousand people to make sure, ensure their safety at all. We can all sit back and say what should be done or what could be done. But when you're sitting behind that and on the dais, it's really difficult because somebody is gonna be left out. You can't cover everybody, but you can make an effort and do exactly what you can. And with the new ones, you're gonna have some days to where you're gonna have to make some harsh decisions as well. And then we can have that empathy and sympathy as well. But I want to thank you. I'm the president of the Dome of Hope Organization. And I just want to say this too, is that what I would really like to see is that you have a tracking system on the nonprofits who receive so much money. It's always the same, 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 same ones. And those of us who stayed, we never left. We don't get anything. We're kind of invisible people. So even that, I have the Dome of Hope is a nonprofit organization. I have the Daily Solution is a youth workforce development. And also have a nonprofit for homelessness because I too was homeless. So you want to have somebody who have that experience. Similar to Jason, our family, the Ford family. My nephew was right there with your brother when he took his last breath, Michael Farley, you know? And so, we have that bond. And we want to make sure that we love Stockton. I love Stockton. But we want to be seen as well to where you can invest back into the nonprofits who are here so you don't have to acclimate someone from the outside to give them what we have in the inside. We want to do that. Last point from the south side. I'm from fourteen, I'm the last of fourteen children from southeast Stockton, Sierra Vista, where I wear that as a badge of honor. Still there, spending all over sixty years there. I was a high school dropout from the tenth grade from Edison. Now I have a doctorate degree from the University of the Pacific. So you can still continue on. So I understand that. Accountability, transparency. And I thank God for each and every one of you that made the decision to serve. Thank you.
Welcome to the new year. And I truly appreciate... My name is Ed Stockton. I'm at 2018 Park Avenue Street. But I also own property here in Stockton. And I'm here to tell you a very special thing about tonight. One is that the people that have come to you have told you a story that is more special than you guys will ever... You'll remember this your entire life, right? And I'm gonna tell you a little story. It may go a little longer. You're gonna hold on for me to do it because I'm a son of lords. You know what that means? That means a son of a lord means that he will fight to the death to defend every single human being in this room right now. And I swear to God, I will do that. My name is Ed Stockton. The city's named after my family. And I'm gonna offer you guys something that is gonna radically change our city. So first of all, I'm making a public tonight. I'm offering a hundred million dollars to do a program that is basically digitizing, which I've already paid for or done it with my partners for the city of Stockton. It'll be a digital twin. We're gonna do a hundred cities in the United States in preparation for the 250th anniversary of the United States of America. Now, I also made the offer to, for my families, the Morgan House donated the property to Princeton University. I could do New Jersey. But if you guys want to do it, I'm offering it. And you know what? I don't know you, Mayor Fagazi, yet. You don't know me yet. I'm a scientist. I've won two of the most international awards, Solar Impulse Foundation, for my invention on a zero-emission hydrogen boiler. And the young man sitting to your right, he's got a lot of connections. He's got a lot of whatever. He's got a lot of flair. But you gotta get to the people. I know you think you do. I'm sorry to say this, but you gotta go a little deeper. You gotta feel their pain. This is us. You guys are playing a game. You're young. You're kids to me. I know, I may look young, but I'm not. I'm getting old, and I'm falling apart. So I'm gonna ask you. I will offer you right now. And you guys can settle down and have a communication. I'd like to meet with, I guess, Mayor Fagazi. You have a lady that is now ready to do like an infrastructure project. I'll finance it. Zero debt financing. However much money you want with my partners, no money. You don't pay nothing until you actually, it works. And if it fails, you don't pay nothing while it's getting fixed. And you can do it for twenty, thirty, a hundred years. I'll do the whole thing. Get me the city manager. Get me the people involved. And this is gonna save our city. You don't have to go out for bond. You can do that. That's fine. Or you can do that after. After you do the deal with the group that I'm bringing. And these are men and women of heart. I've already reached out, but now I'm really reaching out because there's the celebration on the 250th anniversary. And I do a digital twin of the city of Stockton right now, which won't cost the city one penny. But you'll gain revenue off every transaction on the digital twin. So I'll leave it at that. You guys want to talk to me? Everybody knows how to get ahold of me. I'm really easy, really easy to get ahold of. Y'all got it? Go! I look forward, I look forward to a discussion this week.
Why you have to have a minute? Because I'm here all night, and it's nothing contributing.
This man behind me, part of this deal is with faith-based stuff, like Eric Padefso did in our city. It was taking, I'm taking, and he's doing it. I don't have to do it because I'm getting too old, although he's getting old. So we need younger guys to do it for us. Bottom line is, is if we do like his dad's voice and we part of this whole digital world, we can lead. And I have the people to do it. Just give me the chance.
Thank you.
I got Shane Haddi to come in here tonight. I didn't know what was going on. This man called me. I was in San Francisco. He said, "I'm going somewhere tonight, and I need you to be there." You can't say no. And I said, "I'm on my way." I do know Jason. The last time I saw him, he and I worked at a group home called Sunnyside on the south side. And he grew up with my son Elijah. So I'm here, even though some of y'all know me because I used to live here for thirty-some years. And I've never said anything bad about Stockton. I always said I thought it had as much potential as any city I've ever been in that I've traveled to. This man here is not asking y'all for anything. We've already funded what we gonna do. So we don't need people's money. What we want to do is serve people and help people that are helping people. And that's our goal. So we already got the money. It's in the bank. We just need to distribute it as God leads us. And that's what we plan to do. I need to see you, Jason, sometime today.
Mayor Fagazi, Vice Mayor Lee, members of the council. I'm Bishop Dwight Williams with New Genesis Ministries and New Genesis Housing Development. I want to take this opportunity to say congratulations to each and every one of you who have been elected and those who are continuing on the council. We're looking forward to working with you. Christina, you came a long way from planning commission. And I know you'll do well in this capacity. Jason from the south side. I passed it in the south side for twenty years. Saw you and some of your friends around you grow up. And I guess looking forward to working with each and every one of you in this coming term. I want to thank my two personal councilmembers. I can say I really got two personal councilmembers because I live off in the Swenson Park area with Councilmember Blauer's district. And then, of course, where I'm based at at our church is with Councilmember Enriquez. To both of you, I want to say God bless you especially. Look forward to working with each and every one of you. And I pray, I pray that as you move forward that God's wisdom and guidance be upon each and every one of you, your family, and all that you do. I'm here if you need me. Everybody knows how to get me. I'm one of the most accessible pastors in town. So again, God bless each and every one of you. Thank you so much. So again, God bless each and every one of you. Thank you so much.
Español? No, it's not, it's not translating.
It is, it is.
Mi nombre es Cristina Barrios. Vengo de Weston Ranch, Distrito Seis. Me da gusto saber que el miembro del concilio tiene nuevos planes para la ciudad de Stockton. Primero que nada quiero felicitarlos también a cada uno, a todos los miembros del distrito, y me da gusto saber de nuevos proyectos. Sobre todo espero que en este 2025 las luces en Weston Ranch se reparen. Es una de las prioridades. También necesitamos, este, viviendas más económicas. Hay muchos hombres, sobre todo nuestra área. Es muy peligroso. Y me gustaría que hubieran nuevos cambios para nuestra vecindad. Muchas gracias y espero que trabajen todos juntos. Gracias.
Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Casey Diaz, originalmente de Oaxaca, México. He vivido los últimos veinte años en esta ciudad tan bonita de Stockton. Yo quiero agradecerles a todos los que están presentes, las autoridades de ahora y los que han estado en el pasado también, porque aunque cuando yo me vine de San Jose, California, para acá, me decían que no llegara a Stockton porque era muy peligroso, que aquí no se podía vivir, no había trabajo. Y yo quiero decirles que es la prueba de, yo soy la prueba de que nuestra ciudad es muy bonita y que nosotros la hacemos bonita trabajando juntos. Yo estoy muy contenta de vivir aquí. Aquí fue mi hijo a la escuela. Tenemos muchas cosas que ofrecer a la comunidad. Solamente tenemos que informarnos, buscar ayuda, y estoy muy contenta de estar aquí. Cuenten conmigo. La verdad, no sé cómo yo puedo ayudar, pero, uh, lo es. Abrí un pequeño negocio aquí en Stockton recientemente. Están todos invitados. Y quiero que sepan que cualquier cosa que nosotros podamos hacer, estamos a sus órdenes. Muchas gracias a todos. Feliz Año Nuevo a todos los que estamos presentes y los que no están también. Gracias.
Y aquí tienen a Soyla. Soyla Moreno, representando la comunidad latina de Wester, Weston Ranch, south Stockton. Y se me viene a la mente cuando fui a darle la bienvenida al city manager, Harry Black. Le, le saludé, pero al mismo tiempo le di una carta con un sobre, con ciertos pedidos para la comunidad. Siéntanse satisfechos de que la gran lista que les traía se me quedó. Así es que estoy bien complacida con Cristina Fugazi, la única politicia en que a mí no me ha decepcionado, porque en realidad Cristina Fugazi sabía que comunicándose con Soyla Moreno, ella iba a ser una ganadora. Así es que lo felicito, este, la comunidad. Ustedes dieron que iba a haber un cambio. La comunidad quería el cambio, y, y, y ganaron. Así que hoy tienen la oportunidad, hagan de cuenta y caso, de que hoy se les está dando un papel en blanco para que ustedes lo llenen con todo lo que van a hacer para la comunidad. En cuatro años, ese papel lo queremos ver lleno, pero no lo queremos ver solo con foro apps. Está de más decirle porque yo sé que ustedes van a desempeñar su trabajo porque ustedes trabajan para nosotros, y sí se puede!
My name is Joseph Mays. I'm Native American. I wanted to say something about this one percent of us Native Americans. It's so hard for us to get our grants and everything, because we're one percent. We're almost annihilated by this country of ours. But we only have one coordinator for all the schools. We should have more coordinators to help with the Native Americans' culture. And so sad that we can't prosper like we want to because of the percentage. Thank you.
You broke it.
Congratulations to the board, Mario, Christina, I don't know, I can't remember all the names, Yapuda. Um, congratulations to everybody. I'm not gonna say anything that we need to get a lot of things done in Stockton, because you all know we need a lot of work, we need a lot of help. Um, I didn't say my name. My name is Susan Jessica Mays. I'm the president of American Legion Auxiliary. Christina, you have come a long way. Your parents raised you, right? You've accomplished many things. Girl State, you're now the mayor. Um, I guess we shouldn't call you just Christina now, you're Mayor Fugazi. I just wanna say congratulations to everybody, and, and thank you for being on the board. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor Fugazi. Good evening, the new elected, um, city council members and the current city council members. I'm Lang Fu Nguyen. I'm president of the Asian Pacific Islander for Public Affairs, but I'm here as the Stockton, you know, community member. Um, I just want to, um, first thank Stockton City that opened the door for the Asian community to come here to settle in Stockton. My family came here as refugees. So when we came here, we suffered in Vietnam for fifteen years under the communist. So when we came here, we don't have anything but, you know, a couple of set of clothes. But this is where we start our new life here. And thirty years passed. Now, my family has settled here. We have, you know, business here in Stockton. We own houses here. And, you know, that thanks to the community had to, you know, have opened the door for us and support us in the past years. Um, but as the Asian community, we are a growing, growing population here in Stockton. We are now make up, you know, the Chinese, Japanese, Vietnamese, Mongol. We make up like twenty percent of the population in Stockton. And you see that, you know, we have a lot of business here. But we do have challenges. You know, the business has challenges, especially public safety. We have a lot of break-in. And usually we don't, um, report, because most of the time we reported, but we didn't get, you know, responded from the police department. So I hope, you know, the new city council, um, you know, will pay more attention to our community. You know, my brother, he have a, um, um, medical practice on St. Mary and Pacific Avenue. And, um, his building, I mean, the business there had been vandalized and break-in. But not only break-in one, break-in two times. We called the police, but, you know, nothing, nobody cared. So, you know, please pay attention to that, um, problem. Thank you.
Pastor Trina.
If it had not been for the Lord on my side, tell me where would I be? Where would I be? Listen, hello, everyone. My name is Pastor Trina Turner. I thought I'd do that just to kind of wake us up, because it's getting late, but we have a lot of people that want to say some wonderful things and congratulate you. I wanna say that I'm Pastor Trina Lenell George Turner. Uh, and I am a pastor here, a staff pastor at Victory and Praise Church, located at twenty twenty-nine East Harding Way in the city of Stockton. And I want you to know, we've been here for thirty years. I am not, uh, born and raised Stockton. I'm a transplant from the Bay, and I know that gets a lot of bad rap sometimes. But I hit the ground running, and I've served this city now for thirty years. And the church, Victory and Praise Church, where my pastor's Bishop Rufus K. Turner, he's an amazing individual, um, there, we started out programs when we were small. We have a sixty-eight thousand square foot building now where we serve and fill in a lot of the gaps that the city can't fill in. But we started from when we were in a little bitty, small building on Center Street. And we were often called on then by the city council to come down to the movie theater to just have our people walk around, because when we did, they found that there wasn't as much, um, crime or issues or problems. We've served there, and we've moved on to do many programs, STEAM programs and NAGO programs, programs for the seniors. Now, why am I saying that? Because we're one of many churches. We're one of many CBOs that's doing amazing work in the city of Stockton. And my ask of you, as you come in with all of your excitement and energy, is that you don't forget about the work that is already going on here. And oftentimes, you will outsource, I've heard us outsource, or pay to call someone in the Midwest to figure out what should go on. And I wanna remind you that there is a whole lot of us right here that have skills and ability, knowledge and history. We have experience where we've served right here in the city. And I want to remind you to utilize those services that are here. I love the plans that, uh, you talked about today, and I believe you're gonna try to do every one of them. But I want you to recognize, and I want the rest of us to recognize, that they cannot do anything without us. And so I want you to know that we're going to be pulling together. My prayer and desire is that we'll lose all, um, disunity and sides and, and who voted for what and what side I was on and who I tried to get rid of or didn't. I'm hoping we can lose all of that and pull on the same side of the table against the issues that still plague our city. Because I believe in the hope and the dreams that each and every one of you outlined, and I believe it can happen. I'm excited to help you make it happen. And so as you find ways, thank you, old council members, for still being here. Thank you, new council members, for fighting to get where you are. I love the fight. I love the fight. I'm a fighter myself. I want you to know that all promotions, according to my faith belief, come from God, which meant that you didn't get any promotion on your own. God said it so. He said it was okay for you to be where you are. So with that, I want you to know, you're the right ones. You're the right ones to bring about change. You're the right ones to make it happen. I'm so excited about every one of our officials, and I believe in speaking life into people. So whatever people did or did not do yesterday, today they gonna do better. They're gonna do better because we're all pulling for you, praying for you, pushing you. And, um, this time next year, when we, not four years, this time next year, as we get started, we're gonna be in a different place. I speak life over you. I'm praying for you. God bless you and congratulations.
Sowabona.
Well, I was gonna sing, but, you know, she took that from me, so, and my outfit apparently as well. Thanks, Mom. Okay. I, I just wanted to say, um, congratulations to everyone. I know we've met a couple of different times. Um, Tia Barnes with Faith in the Valley, who also works very closely with Victory and Praise, along with many other congregations that are in, um, the city of Stockton, like Life City and Greater Marinata and First Festivalonians and, uh, the list goes on and on. Quite a few of the pastors and the congregation were out in the audience today as well. Um, so I just wanted to say congratulations. I'm excited to continue working with you or work with you for the first time if we haven't had an opportunity to do, um, that together to make the city a better place.
Hi, my name is Tracy Morland, and I just wanted to say congratulations to the new mayor and council. This marks not only the beginning of a new chapter for our community, but also the continuation of a shared journey towards progress, unity, and prosperity. This election signifies the trust and confidence that residents have played in your leadership, vision, and commitment to the well-being of all citizens. This moment also represents an invitation for collaborations. Governance is more effective when it reflects the voices and concerns of the people it serves. As citizens, we must engage with the mayor and council, offer support, constructive feedback, and active participation in the democratic process. Together, we can create a synergy that ensures decisions are informed by the diverse perspective and aspiration of our community. Unity and cooperation between leaders will be the foundation of sustainable growth and development. To the new mayor and council, I extend my best wishes as you embark on the significant, significant journey. May your tenure be marked by visionary leadership, compassion, decision-making, and impactful accomplishments as you work to address the challenges and opportunities ahead. And I look forward to working with you guys. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dan Richardson. Everybody up there except Councilmember Potts know who I am. Uh, you either sat in my living room, stood in Victory Park, and talked with district forum members about problems we had. Jason, you walked up to me after council meetings and complimented, you know, the comments I made at council meetings. I wanna congratulate the new members, returning personnel from the city, um, returning council members as well who have spoken with me in the past, uh, in private and at council meetings. I appreciate all the support that this council gives. You guys have an enormous task ahead of you to fix Stockton. What I would say is that we need the citizens of Stockton to step up. We need the citizens of Stockton to say what's on their mind. We need the citizens of Stockton to support our first responders. We're too few out there in the first responders to expect them to solve all our problems. If we as a city and people in the city do not do the right thing, the city of Stockton will never get fixed. So I would encourage the city council, move forward with all the plans that you have. The city manager with his efforts in hiring police personnel. We need the citizens of the city to step up. On another note, and I haven't heard it mentioned tonight, you may, may have missed it. The firefighter that lost his life here in town last week. Yeah, I, I hope that everybody is saying a prayer for him and his family, and I appreciate that. Um, you guys have a great evening, the rest of it. I look forward to working on committee M, uh, measure M in the city and in the future. I'm excited about it, and I look forward to working with everybody up there. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Justice Baka, and I'm currently part of the foster care system, and I also lived in Mary Graham Hall. I'm unfortunate, I am fortunate enough to be in a supportive placement, but I know not many are. I know there's a lot of work to do. I look forward to see what you put together in the foster youth so we stay out of trouble. And I would like to offer my help and sign. I also attended Taylor Elementary. Thank you for supporting the after-school program and the plus leadership program. Congratulations and thank you again.
Hello. My name is Judy Gray. Um, I am a foster mother. Um, I've met Ms. Fugazi a couple of times at a venture academy. Um, I have, I come from an adoptive home of ten siblings. Some of my siblings attended Venture, and you were their teacher. I also fostered children that attended Edison High School, and you were the vice principal. So, um, some of my, some of my foster children were suspended by you, Ms. Fugazi, understandably, for fights and other things. Um, I ask for you guys to please focus on the foster youth, uh, the summer programs you have planned, uh, summer jobs. Please prioritize the foster, foster youth. Uh, Jason, me, thank you for having all those toy drives you've had in the past couple of years. A lot of my foster children have benefited from them, and, uh, congratulations and have a good night.
Uh-oh, okay, let's see, I can do like this. All right, I'll just step back. Thank you. Hi, everyone. Happy New Year's. My name is Rena, and I'm from The Ranch. And my husband and I and my two, my two daughters, we bought a home there twenty-seven years ago, if you can believe it. So I'm not a Stocktonian, but I am because I love Stockton. And what I wanna say is, I'm looking forward to change. Um, I just met you, Mayor Fugazi, Mr. Lee, you know, Toys for Joy. You know, I enjoy giving my time. It was a beautiful day, even in the rain. I, I wouldn't even change it for nothing. I'd have been there in my slippers. But what I wanna say is that, um, a time ago, there was a beautiful Stockton. And when I went out sick from the sheriff's department, I used to ride around in my scooter when they used to have festivals down in front of our home, just right in the front. All the vendors, just a nice time in the sun. That all went away and everything changed when people's purses were getting stolen out. You know, you couldn't be downtown past six o'clock, you know? So I just wanna say I'm happy. I can't wait for the- I can't wait for the change. And I'm in the ranch, and I just want to say I knew things changed, but about five years ago, we got speed bumps. So on that note, Cesek Weta.
Good evening. Congratulations, first of all. My name is Pastor Curtis Smith. I'm the executive director of Faith in the Valley, and I'm also the senior pastor of Destiny Christian Center. I just feel excited about what's going on here, about what's to happen. I am a product of a 14-year-old father and a 13-year-old mother who eventually, one graduated from E House and the other from Franklin High. And I want to just speak of that there's something in the atmosphere today, and it's hope. People have showed up here with hope because of what they expect can happen and the possibilities and the opportunities. And so I just wanted to encourage you all that we should work together. And even though we're in this Bob Hope, no disrespect to Bob Hope, but I'm gonna just call this the Hope Cathedral on tonight because there's a hope in the atmosphere and people have come with expectation. And so Scripture says, "Now faith is a substance of things hoped for and the evidence of things not seen." So we believe that there's an audacity that's built in hope. We have the audacity to believe that what we do not see is actually going to be something that we're dreaming of. We're dreaming of everything that you mentioned, opportunities for the youth, you know, affordable housing. These are things that we cannot see, but we believe that they can manifest. And as Pastor Tina said, you are the ones can actually do the job. So let's keep on dreaming, let's keep on believing, let's actually, while they're looking at us, because we're getting a lot of attention here, in the midst of the chaotic world that we're living in and the diverse, I say not the diversity, the divisiveness that's happening in our country, let's make Stockton an example of what it can be like when we come together and put down our differences and appreciate others because, you know, we are, we have the culture, I should say, of respect. You know, we have the culture of love. I love you because of who you are, and I don't punish you because of who you're not. So let's work together. Let's do this thing. Faith in the Valley is here to help support you all. And I just want to say, Jason, I just moved back to where I came from. So I'm in District Six now, so let's make some things happen.
I just want to say to Mayor Fugazi, she has been such an inspiration in the city of Stockton. She has come to us so many times, and she has sat in our pulpit, not just as a city official, but as a friend. I called her friend because we have kindred spirits. And I want to say congratulations to you. And we are here, you know we are here, to support you in whatever you need done. And to all of the Congress, I mean, all the council people, congratulations.
Mayor Fugazi? We're here. And newly appointed council members, congratulations. City manager black, congratulations to you all. I'm also excited about our up and coming opportunities. They are unlimited. They are unlimited. We have a saying that we say at our church, that this is the season for extraordinary, uncommon, supernatural, just don't make no sense blessings of the Lord, favor of the Lord, healing of the Lord, deliverance of the Lord, transformation of the Lord, restoration of the Lord, redemption of the Lord, love of the Lord, power of the Lord. Everything we need God to do, this is our season, and it is happening now in the city of Stockton. So if you're in agreement, somebody put your hands together and give God the best praise you can give Him as a sign of agreement. I'm excited. And we're not waiting on you all to make it happen. We all are going to make it happen. Because this is our season. God bless you, and God bless Stockton.
Hello, you all. Congratulations. Short, I'm sorry. My name is Marthella McWilson. I was not born here, but this is home for, I ain't gonna tell you my age, but a long time. I've been doing real estate and loans and credit repair, short sales probates, you named it, Michael knows who I am. We just took a bus trip to Venetia or something. And so I have my workout partner right there. I have Mr. Jason. He doesn't remember me, but I remember him very well. I know Evelyn. I know your brother that passed. I know Chris. So these are my circle of people. I kind of like be in the background when I'm with Catalyst Real Estate, and we've been here a long time, doing a lot of good business, fixing people's credit, making people homeowners that never thought they would. And I'm really happy about that. And so the American dream is still alive. Stockton is wonderful. And unfortunately, a lot of people in Stockton have not been past their five foot here, 10 feet that way. There's waterways around here. There's golf courses around here. There's beautiful places that you gotta go up to eat. So Stocktonians, people think it's offensive when they tell me that, but I don't mind. I've been here a long time. My mama, it's her birthday today, her heavenly birthday. Her name is Catherine Hollins Fox. So I'm part of the Fox family, which is big here. Hollins is from Illinois. But she had her heavenly wings, and I thank you for having it on this day because I wasn't going to get off the bed, although my workout partner, I love her so much. Ms. Christina, mayor, you deserve it. You put in the work. You put in the time. And Jason, thanks for coming back. We need a rejuvenation. And so with all that being said, thank you all for stepping up where others would not. A lot of people can sit in the background and talk about what could be, should be, and don't lift a finger. But just so that I put you all on notice, my name is Marthella McWilson, 209-430-7330. Call me, because anybody knows, these nonprofit organizations, pastors and teachers, they know, if you need me, I'm gonna show up. I do home buyer workshops when there's nobody around, when there's three people in a house. Credit repair parties when there's five people, because that's my mission. Because the system was rigged a long time ago, and it still is sometimes. And homeownership can be available for Hispanics, Mexicans, whatever, Spanish, black, white, everyone. And I'm here to make it happen. I have a Marthella Keys program. Thank you so much for having this time for us to speak to you one-on-one, because, you know, in traffic, we're all moving. Okay? So I just wanted to say thank you. I was gonna sit down and let the doctor just say what she said, but I had to get up and say thank you all for your service. And I'm here of any service you need from me. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Vazquez, and I want to really say Christina has been the gem in Stockton for quite a long time. I met her over 10, oh, I met her probably like 14 years ago while she was vice mayor. And we used to go out in the ditches and get dirty. We used to go to Stanislaw Street in Hazelton and clean it up. You know, she's amazing. I have a story for her. While my grandson was at E House, he got in trouble. She'd go in his class, he'd be at the teacher's desk, all kickbacks or whatever. He just graduated. He just graduated before his 18th birthday, prior to, he was on time, actually, early. He's got a job, he's doing really well. But I just thank you. I knew, I was so glad when you put your hat, you know, your ring in the hat or a hat in your ring, whatever, and that things was going to come. Our season's changing. Michelle, you have done an amazing job for holding your district, an amazing job. And you weren't just holding your own district down, you were making your way through Stockton, sweetie. You were doing what it took. Jason, I have one for you. The old El Dorado Bowl is now turned to Podesta's Teen Center. It's just a sitting building waiting to be opened. Very beautiful inside. So welcome to all of the council members and our returning council members. We're going to put prayer into our new council. Thank you.
Hello. My name's Edwin Valdez. I'm here on behalf of Fatherhood Legacy. I'm the founder of it. First and foremost, I'd like to congratulate all the new council members. Second of all, thank you for your words of wisdom and encouragement because you all show that you have a legacy. I also want to go a special shout out to Jason. Thanks to you, I was able to meet Floyd, and with that, a beautiful opportunity came from it. So I do look forward to working with the city of Stockton on bringing this Fatherhood Legacy Celebration. We will be looking to break three, getting those world records, and it will be an opportunity to bring global spotlight to the city of Stockton for funding. And then during desperate times, it costs for extreme measures, so sometimes you have to think a little bit unorthodox. So I'm working diligently with the cannabis community to create a legacy center that will not only empower the youth, but also the adults. It gives an opportunity to bring anywhere from five to 50 millions for funding. And every time I see Stockton, I see the potential of it like Redwood City. When I had moved over here from East Palo Alto, I thought East Palo Alto was bad, but Stockton takes it to a whole other level. So with that being said, I'm hoping that through the Fatherhood Legacy Foundation, I'm able to funnel tons of money in here to empower the community and really change and connect with the community, because I feel that the cannabis can open up a lot of doors to where we can stop violence and drug usage. It's just something that we really have to help them get tax breaks to fund these projects because the cannabis community is eagerly ready to fund this project. It's just working with the city to be able to have non-cannabis-related projects with the community. So I'm going to start off a Stockton prayer party every month. So I look forward to working with all of you to bring the community together and just really bring this legacy center, because like I say, everyone has a legacy. And as a community, we really have to put that together. Thank you.
My name is Bishop Dr. Andrew Watkins. I'm the senior pastor for Unity Community Christian Baptist Church, the president of the Baptist Pastors and Ministers Alliance. So much has been said, some singing and some dancing and some requesting. What I'd like to do is just offer you a prayer. You see, the one thing that unifies you all is you're all winners. You went through some stuff, and you gotta go to work. It makes you workers and also it makes you servants. I pray that God grants you wisdom, access, favor and continuing blessings. I believe that together you will make this city better. Not that it wasn't good, but you will make it better. And last but not least, when you're all fighting and you're fighting for your projects and for the things that you want funded, remember that politics is local and it's all about the people as a whole. And when you're screaming and when you're yelling, I want you just to remember that God's grace is sufficient for you. His strength is made perfect in your weakness. And then I want you to breathe through your nose and out your mouth. Then I want you to smile, because you get to do the greatest job representing the greatest city, representing the greatest group of people. And then I want you to go to work. Thank you so much. I appreciate you.
Good evening, Mayor Fugazi and Vice Mayor Jason Lee, which feels good to say, and the rest of the city council. My name is Zach Holsey. I am a 17-year-old community advocate from the city of Stockton. And out of anybody in this room, I, as a 17-year-old, can certainly say that we do need a lot more for the youth, a lot more, which is great to say because we have two teachers and a wonderful youth advocate, a few of them. I need to meet you, by the way. I've been waiting for a long time to meet you, Mario LaPonce. And yeah, in conclusion, there's a lot more to love about Stockton than the hate, and this new city council majority is one to love. So thank you. Congratulations.
What's happening with the dog? I go by the name of Hady Baby. I'm an entertainer out the city. You know what I'm saying? I didn't excuse the pajamas and stuff. What's up, Jason, man? I see you doing your thing. You look sharp. Zach out here with the suit on, man, it's tight. I ain't never got invited to nothing like this. You know what I'm saying? You walk in free. Hi, Ms. Pedilla. Y'all look nice up there, man. I'm proud of all of y'all, and I can't wait to see the future, and I'm very excited. So thank you all.
Hi, Ms. Fugazi. I just came up here, I just wanted to tell you guys congratulations, and Ms. Fugazi, thank you for everything. Ms. Fugazi, earlier you mentioned like the infrastructure. I want to be a part of that because I'm tired of like just driving to the Bay Area and stuff. I want to be home. I just came, came back from the Bay. Like I've been, I've been traveling for the past eight years now. Is there any possible way we could do like local hire so I could stay home here in our hometown and stuff with, you know, with my family and my community? Once again, my name is Gina Von Kell. I am a proud member with the International Union Painters and Allied Trades, Local 487. Also, I'm a Youth Bill graduate from Youth Bill San Joaquin. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina.
So good evening, and thank you for allowing us to speak to you today. My name is Michael Emerson, and I'm the founder and commander of VeteranHelp.net. Some of you already know me. But again, congratulations on all of you being voted in and those that were also here before. Veteran Help is an organization here in Stockton in San Joaquin County that helps veterans and the homeless. And I just want to offer our services to you. You can go on our Facebook page, which is VeteranHelp.net. And we're here to help you, and hopefully you can help us to help veterans. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Elaine Mooney, and I am the senior administrator of the, of Dr. Louis D. Stalworth Senior Charter School. And I would like to congratulate all of you tonight. Mayor Fugazi, Vice Mayor Lee, and everyone. We are so grateful. I'm so excited to see what will happen for our future for Stockton. I have been born and raised here. I will be 48 years old in July. And there, nothing like this has ever happened in the history of Stock, in the history here. And I'm so grateful that you are all in office. I wanted to mention that I work for Charter School, Dr. Louis D. Stalworth Senior Charter School, and we need space for the, we service children from every district, and we need space. We have nowhere to house them. We also, we need a facility. We would like to, we have children that are homeless, and I have actually gone to the gutter to find where they live, to help them, to even give tents, whatever we can do. We go beyond, over and beyond what we're called to do, but that is what we're called to do. It may not be on paper, but we do it from our hearts. And so we're asking for your help. Also, I am over the Mooney Foundation, and we, we're into the arts, stage plays, concerts. And we would like to bring more to Stockton in that area. So we know that with your help, that we can do more for the city. I've worked with Tyler Perry and Bishop TD Jakes. I've been on tour with them. And I'm a baby from Stockton, so I want to, I want to bring that here and go higher. And I know with your help, we can do that. I love you all, and I'm grateful that you allowed us to have these words. Have a great evening.
My friend told me I had to say something, so I'm saying something. My name is Rhonda, and I'm not from Stockton, but I've been here for about seven years. And I just launched a youth organization called Thumbprint International. And my concern is to just help the youth. I just have a passion to help the youth and our next generation, and also the safety of the community. And so I just want to say congratulations to everybody, and we can do it. And so I just want to say congratulations to everybody and we can do it.
Supervisor.
My name is Mario Santiago Guardia. I'm coming up here wearing two hats. I'm the former president of Stockton Firefighters Local 456. There's a memorial tonight, so our firefighters aren't here. They were here earlier, but they're at the memorial now. So I'm newly elected to the county supervisor of District One, which is the majority of the city. I'm not going to spend much time, but I'm ready to go to work. Let's get to work and get some stuff done. So I'm looking forward to it and excited. So congratulations to everybody and happy to see you guys up there.
Hello, my name is Dr. Nancy Young. Most recently, the mayor for the city of Tracy. I was at that meeting earlier today to do a presentation and told them, don't get used to seeing me because now I'm on vacation. But I just wanted to come here and congratulate all of you, the remaining and the brand new ones. And I just wanted to just wish you all the very best and just pray that God blesses you to just make the best decisions under every bit of pressure that you will get. And just may he grant you the grace to just be kind even when people try you and try that patience that you came with. But also to just have the courage to make the best decisions no matter what for your city. So all these years I haven't been able to come, but I've come to other things throughout the time and I've worked with a number of you throughout the twelve years that I was on the council. And Fugazi, just recently on the ACE, and I saw you the other day as you just came back to the ACE Board. I congratulate you and the new ones. And then for Mario, all your official titles, mayor, mayor pro tem, or vice mayor, is it here? Okay, and council members and also city manager. Just glad to be here tonight to be able to just welcome you to this new level of leadership and to encourage you as you move forward. God bless you all.
Good evening. My name is Marbella Villalobos and me and my family would like to congratulate the new mayor and city council. And God bless you.
Hello, my name is Rick Demus and I want to congratulate Christina Fugazi, good friend, and all the new council members and the old ones. I just wanted to say a few words about Christina. I met her back in 2015 at Distribudy Park Center and she was our council member. And I was complaining to her about the garbage, the trash, the abandoned vehicles. And she introduced me to this program called Ask Stockton. And I worked it all the way till my wife had a stroke and we had to stop. But I had put in over eleven hundred complaints and they worked. I mean, the city of Stockton with the court enforcement and public works, they were doing their job. Lately, since I've been down, I had gone back to our district and it's a mess, you know, and it shouldn't be a mess. But like I seen other speakers out here talk about, it takes a community to get Stockton cleaned up. And I think that's what a lot of you council members have to get into your communities like we had before. We had thirty, forty people at Distribudy Park trying to work within the community, but you can't get volunteers out there. Anyway, I want to talk to, say something about Christina. I remember when I say, you know Christina, man, she got fire in her belly, you know? And we used to laugh about that all the time, but thank you, thank you. And you had always inspired me. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Alberto Gonzalez and I just wanted to come up here and congratulate Jason Lee. Thanks to Jason, I met Enrique, a great person. I met his mom, great dancer, Christina Fugazi, Mariela, I didn't meet her, but I helped her campaign putting up her signs. And I'm excited. I've never been up to none of the city meetings and none of this, but I heard Jason's voice on Facebook. And I told my wife, I want to volunteer, I want to see him win. And God helped us and here he is. Thank you, Jason.
Okay, well, it looks like that, oh, sorry.
I forgot to say something. I forgot to say something and I would like to congratulate my Aunt Mariela Ponce.
Thank you. Okay, so it looks like that concludes public comment. I don't see anybody else out there in line, but guess what? We can talk out in the foyer. We'll be okay there. So thank you for all the public comments. We are moving on to item three. That is our, usually our consent agenda. So I don't know if we have to take things individually or...
Unfortunately, yes, you have to take them individually, one vote at a time. And we would do a roll call vote.
Okay, so item three point one, mayoral appointment of vice mayor. If no one wants to discuss it, we can just move straight to a motion. I'll make a motion to approve. Okay, so we have a motion and a second roll call vote.
Councilmember Blower?
Yes.
Councilmember Enriquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember, Councilmember Ponce?
Yes.
Councilmember Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Villa Padua?
Yes.
And Mayor Fugazi?
You betcha.
Motion passes seven zero.
Congratulations, Vice Mayor Lee.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item three point two, mayoral appointments to council committees and committee structures function roster. Now, there was a change. We got a round the bench memo. We had to change the title of one of the council committees. I don't know if we need to discuss that any further, but unless somebody would like to discuss it, I will again move for a motion. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Blower?
Yes.
Councilmember Enriquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ponce?
Yes.
Councilmember Padilla?
Yes.
Council Mayor Villa Padua?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
And Mayor Fugazi?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
Item three point three, adopt a resolution appointing a position in the office of the mayor. Any discussion? If not, motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second roll call vote.
Councilmember Blower?
Yes.
Councilmember Enriquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ponce?
Yes.
Councilmember Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Villa Padua?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
And Mayor Fugazi?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
At this point in the agenda, we move on to council comments. So would anybody, oh, I see Councilmember Blower up first.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd just like to thank the public for showing up this evening. I think it just really shows how much people in our community care about Stockton and care about the city government. I'd also like to extend a warm welcome to all of my new colleagues, all the new council members. Councilmember Enriquez, Vice Mayor Lee, Councilmember Ponce. I want to welcome you just warmly to this body. Anything I can do to help you to be more successful, I am more than willing to do that. Mayor Fugazi, I want to welcome you back. It's been a while since we worked together. It was 2016 and so it'll be good to work together again. I just, I love the city of Stockton. I feel very passionately about our city. I want to make it a better place from the top to the bottom and I want to work with all of you to make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So really, so just really quickly, again, thank you all for being here and your patience. In all my comments, I'm always going to make sure I give specifics of what's happening in District Four. We have a Ground Stack Coffee Meeting on Pacific Avenue this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. And the key focus will be on public safety. We've had a lot of break-ins particularly around the Oxford Circle area. So a lot of the neighbors are organizing, so they'll be at Ground Stack at 10:00 a.m. I also want to give a shout out to one of the folks that mentioned Ask Stockton. Takes all of us, please utilize the Ask Stockton app. I want to thank the two constituents between Center and Eldorado who don't have light fixtures. So thanks to the utilities department to ensuring that we're checking on them. And I personally went to the constituents to visually assess what's happening on that street. Other than that, I'm happy to note that on January 21st, our next council meeting, we will be approving all those that we appointed for boards and commissions. And I'm especially proud that District Four will have a full commission as we are calling it our leadership team. And that is all I have. Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor Lee.
First of all, I would like to say thank you to the community that came out. I know a lot of people left because the public comments went long, but I think that the one thing that I've appreciated along this journey is just the civic engagement that I've been able to create for my district. And so I just, I'm really happy and satisfied in the fact that we're teaching people how local government works, but more importantly, how important it is, especially when it comes to equity. I want to say thank you to the council members and the mayor who attended my Toys for Joy event in Sierra Vista, the second annual. This was not an event for politics. This was truly about building community and we're going to continue to do a lot more of that as we move forward in the work ahead. I want to thank, and I have a few things I did want to put, because now that we've done the ceremony and all that, now we got to get to work, right? I want to thank the city manager, Black, city clerk Catherine, and the city attorney and all the city staff who helped to bring this event together. We wanted to have it at the Bob Hope Theater so we can encourage more attendance and participation. And it was so good to see the room filled with so many amazing people. And I want to acknowledge the fact that we have had multiple shootings and homicides in the last week. And I sit here tonight filled with the obligation to acknowledge those of you that came before this council and acknowledge the death of my brother that happened on February 28th, 1997. Me and my brother, who's in the audience, were there with our other brothers and our family members when he was killed. And I talked earlier about being shot at fifteen. And so when I talk about public safety, I talk about it as a survivor, not a victim, as a survivor of violent crimes and somebody who had choices to make that a lot of us in this community are going to have to have hard conversations about how we turn the page. And I say all that to say that I've asked the mayor to allow me to be very involved in the future of public safety conversations and opportunities to build bridges with the community that may not exist. I want to acknowledge Chief McFadden and his team who are, you know, if we had a bad police chief, I would come out here and I would tell you. Chief McFadden and his team have been phenomenal along this journey of truly wanting to learn more about how to turn the page as it relates to public safety and some of the challenges. And I also want to acknowledge the distinguished guests that came, you know, Supervisor Guardia. He and I talked a lot about what we're going to do in District Six and I went to the county yesterday and told them that I'm not ashamed to beg for money and I will be going to the county and the state and everybody that I can reach who has money to get money for my district. And, but I do want to say that the one thing that has bothered me when we talk about young people in this community is that it almost sounds like it's just like a political dog whistle to get people to believe in whatever our campaign is. And then a lot of people get elected and get political amnesia. I have a great memory and I know that there are, there's the Brown Act that prohibits us from having conversations in more than three outside the room. So I'm going to say something in front of my colleagues up here. All of us have made a commitment to invest in young people and we do not have the luxury of absolving ourselves of responsibility when it comes to the kids in our district, when they go to schools because it's not our jurisdiction. Those kids in those schools are our kids at our homes. And so we will be involved in making sure to hold our school districts accountable as we work in partnership with them to make sure that our kids can read when they're sixteen years old, that they know what they want to do with their lives when they're fifteen years old, that they know what a book is at three years old. All of us up here, two educators, a mother, someone who works in education, all of us that are committed to ensuring that young people have dreams that can be unlocked and not put to sleep early by death and other opportunities like jails, that they're able to live out their full lives. That said, I want to say that earlier when I talked about spilling the tea, truth, trust, and transparency, the only way that democracy works is when the community is well informed and involved. And the one thing that kept slaves afraid of running free was they took the books and didn't educate them on how to become more aware of what was going on. And during my campaign, when I said one of the proudest things I did was give the slaves their books back, that was because I went deep into the community where people don't get information and I gave them all the knowledge they needed and that's why we all won. So let me start by saying that last city council, there was a very spirited conversation around the ASM Global Contract. Specifically, the group of people that do a phenomenal job of managing the city facilities. And this being one of them, I've had events here and this is a historic building that I've been in many times as a kid. And there was conversation around a threat that was made towards one of our vendors. Let me say to ASM that I've done a lot of research, I've talked to a lot of people and I've worked with some of you. You all have done a phenomenal job at maintaining the management of these facilities and we look forward to continuing to work with you. But during the last council, I didn't believe it was appropriate to approve a contract that wasn't to expire until eighteen months from then and could have waited for this city council to come and talk about it. Why? Because in looking at the contract, there were a lot of things missing. So, so what I'd like, what I'd like to do is there were comments made about threats made towards a vendor. In the spirit of public transparency, I'd like my colleagues to support coming before the public in the next city council meeting, sharing what those specific threats were in a very transparent way so we can evaluate them as a city council and decide how we direct staff on how to move forward with that. So if I can get support from my colleagues, I would like to have that added to the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is that it?
So we have two, we have two council members, so that's good enough. Doesn't have to be a motion. Okay. No.
Okay, wait, I'm not done. One more thing. In addition to that, I want to call for two study sessions. I am a detail oriented entrepreneur. I need to understand. I cannot lead, nor will I ever lead in the dark. I have to have information. In addition, I'm calling for two study sessions by the city staff. One of them, I want you to help me understand the policies and practices around contract procurement, extensions, amendments. What is that process? Because I need to understand it because the Bible says, when you know better, you do better. And I can't do better as a leader until I know. So if I can get support from my colleagues, I would like to call for two study sessions. Again, one of them on the practices around contract procurements. And the second one, I will list here, there was a matter before the council on millions of dollars that were given to developers in this community. The Stan Project and the Visionary Home Builders. There's been lots of calls made to me around disparity or how they were awarded the money or not awarded the money, graded, not graded. I don't understand that process. And so I'd like a study session to understand that in front of the public. So those who may want resources in the future will understand how that works. I think I need a second on that.
I agree.
Thank you. Last thing, I'm sorry. I've been waiting to get to work, y'all. I apologize.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, but we actually, for the study session, we need a full vote.
Okay, go ahead. So do I need to ask for a motion? Oh, can somebody make a motion? Oh, I like to make a motion that we get the two study, I'm learning, y'all. I don't know everything, right? I like to make a motion that we have those two study sessions by city staff.
Do you have an expected timeline?
Within the next forty-five days.
I'll second that.
I'm sorry, for clarity, did you say the next four to five days?
Within the next forty-five days.
Forty-five days?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second roll call vote.
Councilmember Blower?
Yes.
Councilmember Enriquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Ponce?
Yes.
Councilmember Padilla?
Yes.
Councilmember Villa Padua?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Yes.
And Mayor Fugazi?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
And I got, this is what happens when y'all elect a talk show host. I like to talk. Okay, I got one more thing and this is very personal to me because in the spirit of my brother before I end with my comments, public safety is something that is important. And we do have police officers that go out and risk their lives every day. And for those of you that don't ever get to see it, you can go to YouTube and look at their critical incidents because they have to post it for you to see. And I've been educating myself on what they go through every day through their lenses, right? Public safety was not just a campaign promise for me or campaign rhetoric. I would call Christina, sorry, the mayor, every day and say, what are we going to do? Did you hear about this shooting? Did you hear about this? And she would call me and say, we should do this and we should do that. And this was just while we were out talking to the voters. And public safety wasn't just a campaign promise, it was a priority. And so for far too long, Western Ranch and Southeast Stockton have not had proper police presence. And so I'd like to agendize the conversation about restoring substations in both areas of South Stockton. So make a motion to agendize the discussion around implementing, is that right? So make a motion to agendize the discussion around implementing, is that right?
I think we just need a second, second council member for that.
Correct, because it's not a study session, just need two council members.
Okay, great.
I'll support it.
Okay, okay, we have two council members for that. Anything else, Vice Mayor Lee?
That's it.
I saw Councilwoman Padilla, you had wanted to speak?
Yes, thank you so much. I have never, I mean, my campaign wasn't half as exciting as this campaign. As you can see, we have this Energizer bunny, Mario Enriquez, on the dais, is ready to get to work, so I'm super excited. But for all the accolades and the congratulations, I truly appreciate the public coming out and supporting this ceremony, and I love seeing all the public comments. But I want to see the thank yous and the congratulations after we do the work for you. We are making a promise to you, and we are going to fulfill it for you. And this election was ran all on transparency. We all aligned together, and we know that the public wants transparency. So I'm hoping that my colleagues would support a, I'm requesting a detailed investigation and report that covers how Measure A funds have been allocated. And I'm hoping that could be done or agendized by January 21st.
I make a motion, oh, sorry, I make a motion to support that, yes, yes.
Do we need to do, okay, okay, we're good on that one.
You know, and the reason why I did that is because that is a topic that always comes up to our council members. And so I want to make sure we are working for the people and doing what the people need and expect of us. I know in Ms. Fugazi's speech, she mentioned some heroes that have come out of Stockton. Well, we tonight have one of those heroes present in our audience, and I definitely want to recognize Juan Heredia. He is a true, passionate citizen of Stockton, and I'm so proud to have you. And we appreciate everything you do, we appreciate the things that you do for the families involved, and I thank you so much for all the work that you do. I appreciate you as well as your family. Most of the council members probably know how I feel about them up here. I am truly excited about this year, about the coming years, because you as constituents are going to see change in the city. You're going to feel tangible change in the city. We are ready to work with you and for you. So here goes 2025.
Councilmember Villa Padua?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank all the community for coming out here tonight. I know it's getting late, but it's well worth it. The needle is moving already, as you see. I want to thank all my elected new council members. Councilmember Enriquez, Councilmember Ponce, our new vice mayor, Jason Lee, and our new mayor, Christina Fugazi. I am looking forward to working with y'all. You guys have a lot of great ideas, and already starting tonight, look at that. And just want to wish everyone a great year. We have a lot of work to do, so bear with us because there's some great things coming here to City Stockton. Good night, everyone.
Councilwoman Ponce?
Hi, everyone, I just want to say thank you again for being here tonight. Very excited to work with everyone, and I'm ready to work for Stockton. And I just want to say thank you again for your support and for being here with us today. Thank you.
Okay, one of the perks of being mayor is I get to speak last. So first of all, I do want to thank Mary Elizabeth. I don't know if she left or not, but she provided counsel with and around the bench, or actually, an email. We got an email from the city clerk that really looked into the number of liquor stores and smoke shops that we have in our city. That is information that we really need, it's something that when I was on council, I asked for because there are businesses operating without the proper licensing, without the proper designation. So I want to thank her for that, we are going to take that, and we are going to run with it because we want to make sure that people know our kids aren't for sale because those smoke shops are selling to our kids, and no, they're not for sale. At my high schools, literally, we collect them every day, and it's really sad. The next thing I want to do is I do also have a request. You know, we have new council members that don't quite know, as Vice Mayor Lee brought up, procurement. If we could get an update just from the directors, doesn't have to be long, what their form and function is of their department, and what are their major projects that they are working on with kind of like a timeline? So if we could get that, I think it should be at a regular meeting. Like I said, it doesn't have to be long, but it needs to be in the public so the public also understands. Because as we said, knowledge is power, and we need to make sure that all of you have that knowledge. The next thing I would say is, you know, thank you, public. I mean, the number of speakers we had tonight, I think that the city clerk told me at the last swearing-in, there were two people that gave public comment, I think there might have been a few more. But tonight, yes, thank you for coming out, sharing your passion, sharing your needs, sharing your ideas. Because as I said, we, we have to work together, and that's not just the people up here, that's the people throughout our city. So thank you for sharing that with us. And fellow council members, know that we are now a family. I truly believe that we are a family, and while we might have squabbles, don't worry if anybody talks bad about you out there, I'm going to beat them up because only I can talk bad about you. No, I'm just joking. But we are a family now, we are going to be spending a lot of time together. We need to show each other respect and know that it is about the work for the people. So whatever those differences are we might have, we won't vote the same way all the time, but when we leave that dais, we still are committed to working with each other. I want to go ahead and thank staff, staff have done an amazing job of making this happen tonight, having the translation. Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you for that. It is what people have been asking for, and what the people want, we are obligated to provide for them. And then the last one, I just would like to close our meeting with a moment of silence for firefighter Robert Bobby Van Rutten that we need to literally, I mean, it's a tough job, and the people that work for us, we really appreciate it. But in honor of his work in our city and for his family and his brothers and sisters in the fire department, I would like to close the meeting with a moment of silence for him and his family. Thank you, and without further ado, meeting adjourned.